Amy Doran.
Here, I'm attending remotely. I had a last-minute family situation come up. I am here.
Dawn Kirk.
Here.
All right. Mission statement, the Thompson School District will be a school district that empowers, challenges, and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel.
Thank you, Stu. First item on our agenda is to adopt the agenda. This would be the agenda for today, August 21st, 2024. Are there any changes to the agenda for tonight's meeting? Any or none? I will take a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, Dawn, in speaking. Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessem. Nancy Rompel.
Aye.
Thank you, Laura Lee. We have several minutes to approve tonight. We have three from our past, um, times together. So first one is 3.1, which is the approval of minutes for June 19th, 2024. Does anyone have any changes to or corrections to the minutes? Any or none? I will take a motion to approve the minutes for June 19th.
So moved.
Aye.
Dawn and Stu. So Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessem. Nancy Rompel.
Aye.
3.2 is the approval of the minutes for the special meeting held on August 5th, 2024. Does anyone have any changes or corrections to the minutes for that special meeting on, um, August 5th? Any or none? I will take a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Thank you, Denise Chapman. So is Dawn and Denise. Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Make sure you guys check your lights on. It's not going through upstairs, please. Uh, Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessem. Nancy Rompel.
Aye.
Um, 3.3 is the approval of the minutes for our study session, which was held August 7th, 2024. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Any or none? I will take a motion to approve the minutes for August 7th, 2024.
Second.
And on. And Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessem. Nancy Rompel.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Our business is done, and we'll move on to public participation. We'll turn it over to Dr. Schaefer.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education, uh, community members, and quite a few students in the audience. These two presidents are back-to-school report for the, uh, first official board meeting of the 2024-25 school year. So last week, we were thrilled to welcome, um, circa around 15,000 students back to our district campuses. The first days of school are always filled with eager anticipation, excitement, and the promise of endless possibilities. Can't wait to see our students thrive and are looking forward to an incredible year ahead. To support our students who are starting this school year in a new building. I'm excited to personally welcome over 170 new teachers to the Thompson School District. Over the past few weeks, we've organized various group and individual activities to help our new staff get settled in. Highlights included a special red carpet ceremony and a formal kickoff presentation for the new school year. I'm incredibly proud of our entire district team here at T S D and look forward to collaborating with them as we continue our mission to educate and support every student. Thank you to the Thompson Education Foundation for donating 1,480 backpacks and supply kits to T S D students to, uh, for the start of the school year as part of our annual Help Kids Succeed School Supply Drop. Over 54 community volunteers gathered at Peak View Academy at Conover Ball to assemble the backpacks and kits while members of the Surtoma Club and Thompson Valley EMS delivered them to our district schools. We're pleased to announce that slots are still available for the Senior Property Tax Workout Program, which offers participants the chance to volunteer in our schools with the added benefit of receiving a payment that is used to offset some of their property tax bill. To participate, volunteers must be 62 years of age or older, and they must also own a home and reside within the T S D boundary area. For more information, please visit our website at tsd.org. This fall, our district Board of Education will continue their series of public engagement sessions, which will provide an opportunity for members throughout our community to meet our board members, learn more about their work, ask questions, and share their thoughts. Our first listening session is scheduled for September 10th from 6 o'clock to 7:30 P M. Here at the district office. Hope you'll be able to join us. So tonight, we have a very, very special guest in our audience, and I'm going to ask Michaela, who I think goes by MAC. Uh, so Michaela, if you want to come forward. And this is Michaela Habente, and, um, she was, uh, recently participated in the National Miss Amazing Competition. National. So let me, let me tell you a little bit about her. At the end of July, our very own MAC, uh, competed in the National Miss Amazing Competition in Chicago. Miss Amazing is an organization that provides opportunities for girls and women with disabilities to build confidence and self-esteem through pageantry. MAC, uh, the Colorado Miss Amazing Queen for 2024 proudly represented the state of Colorado and Thompson Valley High School on the national stage. In addition to being a great student, MAC is also a TBHS cheerleader and has numerous talents and accomplishments. One of her favorite quotes is by Erin Hansen, who wrote, "What if I fall? Oh, but my darling, what if you fall?" We are incredibly proud of you, MAC. You're amazing. Congratulations. Could we, we'd like to take a picture if you, if you can, if you'd be willing, we'd like to do it with the Board of Education. I also think, uh, your principal is here.
Yes.
Jamie Quickshane. So we'd love Principal Quickshane to come forward as well. But yeah, Ford, we could take a picture with MAC. That'd be great.
All right. Ready? Okay. On three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's really cool and very exciting, uh, for our district and our state and for Thompson Valley High School. So this evening, uh, Board of Education, uh, I'd like to bring forward, uh, two individuals who we are going to be recommending for administrative positions here in the Thompson School District. So first, I'm going to ask, uh, Erin Gilbert, who please come forward to the podium. And Erin, um, uh, we are recommending is the new assistant principal of her at the high school. We certainly hope you approve her recommendation because she's already been working. But let me tell you a little bit about Mrs. Gilbert. Erin is coming to T S D with 22 years of experience in education. She's spent eight years, uh, working in M T S S. Her first two years were as the M T S S facilitator at Pooter School District. She then transitioned into the role of M T S S coordinator, where she spent an additional six years. During this time, Mrs. Gilbert partnered with staff, educators, teams, and families to identify and support the academic, behavioral, and social emotional needs of students within P S D. She partnered to write, implement, and report for the education for at-risk student supports and ninth-grade success grants through C D E, the Colorado Department of Education. Mrs. Gilbert led counselors in the facilitation of a kid talks, uh, of a kid talks focused on students attending school more than 80% and struggling academics, behaviors, and mental health. Erin also provided professional development and leadership for conducting home visits while seeking opportunities to engage parents. Her previous educational roles include one year as a moderate-aid special education teacher at Fort Collins High School and 13 years as a multi-categorical special education teacher at Pooter High School. During her time at Pooter High, Erin provided coaching and support for teachers and paraprofessionals that included working closely with administration. She also led teams and environment that focused on prioritizing student needs and positive outcomes through the department and educator room. Mrs. Gilbert received her bachelor's and master's degree from U N C and her principal licensure from Western State College. Erin's background in M T S S and working in a high school environment makes her an ideal candidate for the assistant principals at her at the high school.
Thank you, Dr. Schaefer. Thank you, Madam President, and rest of the board. I'm really, really excited to be joining you all in Thompson School District. Um, as a resident of Berthoud, I am just so proud to be able to serve the families and the students in the community where I live. I think it's going to be a great year. I've got a good admin team. Things have been going well so far, and I'm just really looking forward to the future. So thank you. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to, uh, welcome up Dr. Allison Smith. Dr. Smith, um, has already started at, uh, as assistant principal of Mountain View High School. Dr. Smith comes to the Thompson School District from Colorado Early Colleges, where she spent one year as the head of school. In this role, she developed partnerships with community business leaders, colleges, local districts, and charter schools. Allison also researched and analyzed trends in both education and community needs to develop programming and curriculum and strategic planning. She also mentored, coached, trained, and evaluated staff. Allison was the principal of Pipe's Peak Online School for five years. There she provided leadership in establishing educational goals, planning, developing, implementing, and evaluating curriculum and instructional programs. Allison also held a position of assistant principal for one year at Monfort Elementary School in Reilly School District 6. Here she developed and oversaw multiple improvement initiatives, including multi-tiered systems of supports, um, a foreign-after-school enrichment program, and attendance improvement. Dr. Smith received her bachelor's degree in human development and family studies from C S U, a post-bacc laureate, license in elementary education from Metro State, master's degree in educational leadership and innovation from Regis, and doctorate in organizational leadership from Grand Canyon University. Al, Allison's background as a proven leader makes her an ideal candidate for the assistant principal at Mountain View High School.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, members of the board. I just want to say thank you and for this opportunity that I have to serve our students in Thompson School District. Please know I will commit 100% of my energy, my time, and my knowledge and educational background every single day to our students, families, um, staff, and community. Thank you again.
Uh, our next item would be our board committee reports, it's 4.2. And I'm going to start down there with Dawn, and I asked him to share a goal or a goal that they have for the year or to report on a committee they're working with.
Uh, thank you. So I actually did want to just touch on, um, our new agreement with the Special Olympics. So that happened in July. We had a very quiet month in July, but one very exciting moment. Um, so at the end of last school year, we had this great big all-district, uh, Special Olympics event uh, for our elementary kids, and it was awesome. And, uh, it was really great to get to be part of the, um, training that was done by Special Olympics for their staff, and they signed the agreement with us. And so we're excited to be able to do more with them and partnership with them, which I would say is also a hope.
My committees, uh, haven't met yet during the 24-25 school year, so I'm going to share a best hope. Uh, as many of you, I read the, uh, front page of the Reporter Herald today, and this was also a front-page story on the Denver Post about the improvement in C Mass scores for our elementary and middle school, uh, students. I was very happy to read that. Um, in fact, I believe the scores approached or were maybe slightly better than the pre-pandemic scores. And so I think statewide, and hopefully here in Thompson as well, uh, that means that, uh, we're starting to show improvement again. And my best hope is that when we get the results next fall for the 24 and 25 school year, that what we'll see is even more improvement. And so that's the, uh, that's my hope. That's my best hope as we approach this new school year.
Um, my hope is that we continue to do many of the great things that I keep seeing in this district with all the students who win scholarships, the Thompson Career Center, um, the Youth Crisis Response Team, and I love seeing our students so successful. My hope, though, is that this year we do finally see third-grade reading, where every student, every school is at least 50% proficient. And I hope that we can finally address and do some real work on helping teachers who are leaving because of a lack of support with discipline issues, and the parents who are at their wit's ends because discipline's impacting their child's physical and mental health. And that we can finally figure out how do we give equal treatment, equal protection to all students, especially our biological female students who have to compete in, who don't compete in sports because they don't want to risk injury, or worse, females that are injured, and that has happened. Public education's core job is to educate kids. It's not our job to decide how to parent your children. The classroom's not a Petri dish with, to experiment with your children, testing various social theories. The classroom is where teachers ignite the spark in your child's mind to love reading, love learning, and to embrace the possibility that education gives every student to achieve their dreams. And so my hope for this year is that every decision this board makes is centered on making the classroom the best possible learning environment so students can achieve their dreams.
So my dream, well, I have two seniors this year. The last of my twelve-year-old took us to Thompson Valley. So, uh, and, uh, the Thompson School District, 15 years of the district. Coming to a close except for my balls, you know. As I look at the time that I spend in the district, um, you know, you're like really worried about a lot of things. Um, you're a first-time parent, but I'm taking care of things. And different things when they head off to middle school, and different things when they start high school. And as I see my children launching in, uh, our graduations and our grades. Graduation rates is, oh, great graduation rates, as they've gone up, um, here recently. We still have more work to do in terms of turning out, you know, students who are ready for their, the next job, or the first job. Students are ready to go to school, um, whether the, um, junior school, or higher school, um, some other academic experience. Um, and, you know, for the military. Whatever your children or our children collectively's goals are, we need to be preparing them with some basic skills, the literacy piece, math, science, the reading, all critically important for them to be op, able to operate wherever they end up. Um, and so, but also, people that should do the social emotional work to stay in a job, or even to get a job, and be able to work with other people and, you know, be productive. So there's this balance, I think, that is important. Um, people need to learn to cooperate. Um, we need to work together. Just, so as a, as a board person, I want to make sure that, yes, the supporters look better, as Stu mentioned, and that they continue to look better, that we're doing the right things there. Um, and that we're also taking into account, um, they don't stop learning or contributing when they leave our doors. And making sure that, particularly in high school, all the kids have access to all these wonderful programs like this. And the, um, high school programs, or, you know, which is on the Thompson Career Campus at the right time. I know I was a little blind when I, my first one went to high school. I know a lot more now. I think every freshman parent should be armed with all the possibilities so that their kids are targeted appropriately. And that is it.
Amy.
Um, hi. So just a couple of words that my hope for this school year, um, for everyone is that no matter what your role is in Thompson School District, um, each parent, each guardian, each student, each employee, um, volunteer, each member of a committee, um, anyone who's part of T S D. My hope is that each person feels a sense of community and a sense of belonging in their role here at T S D. Um, each person matters, just as you are, no matter your role. Um, and I hope that everyone has a wonderful year and remembers that, uh, we are all connected and an important part of T S D.
Thank you, Amy. Um, I think that's all been well said, and I don't need to repeat everything that everybody has said other than I hope for harmony and peace for everybody in their role that they have, that they enjoy and find beneficial, and success for all, from whether it's the teacher or, um, whatever role we have, whether it's students, administrator, just so that everybody feels successful and valued. So, um, next piece is 4.3, which is our public comment section. And, um, um, who reads? I forgot, and it's been so long gone.
Because the board wants to hear the viewpoints of the public and also needs to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner, it will schedule time during its regular board meetings for brief comments and questions from the public. The board will set a time for public participation prior to the business portion of the meeting. The time for each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and each individual will only be recognized once. If there is a large number of speakers, the board may elect to make, to take comments for one hour before the business meeting and conclude public comment after the business meeting. Public comments and questions at a regular meeting may deal with any topics related to the board's conduct of the schools. Speakers may offer such criticism of school operations and programs as concerns them, but are encouraged to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Personnel matters will be discussed in executive session. And then you have, when I, when you start speaking, you'll have, uh, two minutes and 30 seconds when the green light's on, and then it'll flash to yellow when you have 30 seconds left, and then it will beep at you until you are done at three minutes. Uh, our first speaker is Riley Locke.
My name is Riley Locke, and I am a freshman at Loveland High School. I was a cross-country runner at, or Lucille Irwin. The running community is a special one, and I'm thankful my parents suggested I try cross-country in middle school. Cross-country twi, quickly became my favorite sport because of the people. Throughout middle school, I heard lots of great things about Coach Torres that made me really excited to come run for her as a freshman. I was really disappointed that the district fired Coach Torres and that the athletes were not given any information about why this was done. I would like another investigation to be done to determine if she can be reinstated as a coach again. Thank you.
Dylan Wheatley.
Hello? Uh, ladies and gentlemen of the Thompson School District School Board, my name is Dylan Wheatley. Uh, I'm a senior at Loveland High School, and I'm also speaking concerning, uh, Coach Torres as, uh, head cross-country coach and head girls' track and field coach. Um, I think Coach Torres has done an exceptional job. I've run cross-country and track for the past three years, and I've, she's been my head coach every year. Um, she's given nothing but exceptional work and great work ethic to support the team in every way. And what confuses me about her dismissal is that, um, there was no, uh, interaction with athletes or the parents of the cross-country team on their opinions towards her dismissal, which confuses me. So that's a question of mine, like, why were the voices of the athletes not considered? Um, I, along with my teammates, would like Coach Torres to be reinstated to her former positions as head cross-country coach and head girls' track and field coach. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Mark Norton. Mark Norton? Oh, okay. Sorry. Wait.
Mr. Superintendent, board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Matt Norton. I'm here on behalf of my longtime and dear friend, Colleen Torres. I've known her and her family for over 20 years, meeting them not longer af, not long after my wife and I moved to Loveland in 2003. Firing her as head coach of the Loveland High Cross Country Team has done significant harm to this wonderful person. I'm upset for her and her family that they have been put through this ordeal, which, for those of us on the outside of the situation, does not seem fair at all. I'm hopeful that my formal role, former role, as a teacher and coach in this district for over 15 years will give some credence to my viewpoint on the policies and implementation of such that led to Coach Torres's dismissal. In short, it was a mistake to remove her from this position for at least the following reasons. Colleen is an educator of the utmost quality, record, and most importantly, demonstrated care for her students. The other athletes on the team, as you have seen, are deeply hurt by her removal. Notwithstanding all of the things she has done in the classroom during her career at Loveland High, in her five-plus years as head cross-country coach, Colleen has built a strong program, competing favorably against many of the nation's best here in Colorado. She's done a remarkable job coaching a co-ed sport, and I can tell you there are not a lot of women head coaches doing so by building all of her team members up physically, mentally, and emotionally in order to take on the challenge of running a long, hard race well. A great cross-country coach like Colleen is a builder of people from the inside out and top to bottom, ready to run the race of life. To say that the issue of trans girls on girls' sports team is still up for debate is a massive understatement, regardless of any published laws or policies. Any policy that leads to the dismissal of a coach like Colleen before going to great lengths to communicate and work with her to find a solution that respects everyone on the team is a broken policy on its face. A strong policy also requires an administration that has the courage to stand in the fire with its frontline staff and not simply consider the threat of negative press or legal action. Colleen, her athletes, and the families involved with Loveland High School Cross Country deserve that. Stand with them. Lastly, I'd urge you to consider how this firing impacts the goal of recruiting and retaining the very best staff for the kids and families of Loveland. Coaching, while gratifying to those of us who choose to do so, exacts a steep price on our time, energy, and other important relationships, and requires strong conviction. Knowing what has happened to Coach Torres, who are you going to get to replace someone of her immense talent, loyalty, and service? I hope for the sake of the kids on this team that you have a good answer for that. I know your job in general and with respect to this topic is difficult, so thank you for your time and consideration.
Janet Wright?
Thank you all for allowing me to speak, Dr. Schaefer and members of the board. My name is Janet, and my pronouns are she, her, and hers. I'm on the Board of Directors for P Flag of Northern Colorado. How many of you have heard of the University of Washington School of Public Health, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the National Institute of Health, National Child Traumatic Stress Network, the National Endocrine Society, the Harvard School of Public, excuse me, Public Health, the Trevor Project, and the American Academy of Pediatrics? What they have in common, apart from having some of the most respected, peer-reviewed work and research, is that they all support gender-affirming care. Gender-affirming care looks different for everyone. It can be as simple as honoring a chosen name and pronouns, which is reversible. LGBTQ plus young people are four times more likely to attempt suicide than their peers. Having one affirming adult in a young person's life reduces their risk of suicide by half. That's a lot. Respecting someone's right to use the name and pronoun of their choice doesn't hurt anyone. It saves lives. There is no agenda to make a heterosexual kid gay or trans. There is no grooming. The only agenda is to keep gay and trans kids alive, one of whom is mine. And who here remembers Maslow's hierarchy of human needs? It's a five-tier model. Number three on that model is love and belonging. A sense of belonging is a primal, inherent human need. Belonging is so important to our sense of self that we feel a sensation close to physical pain when we feel like we don't belong. Everyone in this room has surely felt that at some point in their life, especially as a young person, a young person in school. No one should be made to feel that. Hate is learned at home. At the beginning of the legislative session in Colorado, there were 30 anti-trans ballot initiatives filed. 28 failed, and the remaining two failed at collecting enough signatures. Again, hate is learned at home, and there's no room for it here in Colorado. So thank you to the Thompson School District. Thank you to this Board of Education for your continued dedication of well-being and education for all students.
Emma Deason?
Hi, my name is Emma Deason, and I was a former athlete under Coach Torres. Tonight, I would like to bring to your attention the issue of Mrs. Torres being fired from her head coaching position at Loveland High School. In under a month, an online petition has gained over 800 signatures from members in the community advocating to protect female athletes' rights in Thompson School District sports. It is incredibly unjust to expect female athletes to compete against biological males due to the biological advantages that male athletes have over females. I am not here tonight to argue transgender rights, but rather bring awareness to unfairness that female athletes in the district are experiencing. It is not a question of who is right or wrong, but rather, we need to seek a solution to create fair and equal opportunities for all athletes to participate in sports. Ms. Torres simply raised concern about policies put in place by the district regarding transgender athletes' participation in sports. She seeks to protect her current female athletes' rights and make sure that they were being treated equally. As a former athlete of Mrs. Torres, I can affirm that she would never intentionally discriminate against any athlete. Mrs. Torres loved her athletes. She spent countless hours each and every week at practice and outside of practice, working to create workouts that fit the needs of all athletes, while making sure to encourage her athletes to have fun at practice and created a positive team environment. Mrs. Torres supported us as athletes and as a teacher and mentor. I could not have asked for a better coach during my four years. And to relieve her from her position is not a fair solution. Mrs. Torres is a coach who is dedicated to her athletes and willing to ask the hard questions to protect her athletes. We must work to find a fair and equal solution for all parties. Thank you.
Janie Patella?
Hi, I'm Janie Patella. And is it okay if the board, are the board members okay with my supporters joining me up here tonight? Yep, that's fine. Anybody here in support of Mrs. Torres and of women's sports equality? Before my three minutes? Okay. Dr. Schaefer and other T S D board members, I'm here tonight to present to you my online petition of 825 people who disagree with your decision to fire Mrs. Torres from her coaching position at Loveland High School. These same people also petitioned for Thompson School District to find a solution for girls' sports that paces both biological and transgender girls and their families. You can review my petition, post it on change.org. Letting biological males, many of whom have undergone male puberty, compete with and against biological females is not what Title IX was created. Not only does it rob our hard-working girls from opportunities and scholarships, it is simply unsafe. In only two weeks' time, more than 800 people in our direct community have stepped forward against T S D's current policy regarding this issue. Clearly, it does not reflect the community you claim to represent. How was such a policy constructed and enacted without community input? With growing numbers of transgender students in every school district across the board, we think it is best that an acceptable solution be identified, publicly presented, voted on, and implemented as soon as possible. Thanks.
Ryan Wilken?
It's gonna be hard to follow. Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. My name's Ryan Wilken, District A. I'm a father of two, and I'm speaking to you tonight as a parent. I'm requesting that the board allow a public forum in the near future to talk about the district's gender transition plan, gender support plan, the student identity change request form, and the guidelines regarding such topic. And a lot of that falls into our sports and Mrs. Torres as well. I feel that it's important for our parents, our coaches, our teachers, and our staff to be heard and have an open line of communication and have their questions answered. I would love that opportunity for all of the folks. Some of my personal concerns, considering these topics, are about female sports. I have questions about the district's partnership with parents with transgender in female sports, the rights of the staff, the teachers, and the coaches. My daughters are both female athletes, and I have coached dozens of females and males, probably hundreds, through the years. And I've watched my daughters compete against males. And as much as I hate to say it, there's an age group where males become stronger, faster, and more agile. And I would hate to take away the hard work that my daughters, their coaches, and all of us really here today to give them the rights to have their own sports, to have that taken away and all their opportunities and their future. I, for one, am not willing to do that. I'm not willing to take it away. All of these women's sports had to start somewhere. I mean, we have One Town, One Team, we have a district wrestling team that's apprised of every high school in T S D, I think except for Berthoud, but it's one team. Mountain View just had a flag football team for girls. I mean, we're working hard on the ground level still for all these girls, and I'd hate to have it taken away. Special, the unified sports, that had to start somewhere. Our sports for wounded veterans had to start somewhere. I don't want to take this away from the girls. And I would appreciate your help in having this forum to answer some of the questions, so we don't have to use our imagination. Thank you very much.
Ann Bradberry?
I too would like to invite anybody that wants to come up about protecting girls and girls' sports. You're welcome to join me up here. Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, and school board members. My name is Ann Bradberry, and I'm here tonight to stand up for our kids, our future generations. I've always had a passion and caring heart for kids. Tonight, I'm specifically talking about protecting girls in girls' sports. I'm deeply troubled with the direction that Thompson School District is headed. There are many concerns, but tonight, I will focus on protecting girls' sports. There should never, ever be a boy transitioned to a girl permitted to play on any girls' sports teams. There are stories about boys who have transitioned that have physically hurt girls locally and nationally. It's local, too. It's right here in our own backyard. This is not acceptable. Boys in girls' locker rooms is completely wrong and inappropriate. You are allowing a very dangerous precedent, and I wonder if you have thought all of this through. Please reconsider as you vote on policies regarding transgender issues. Collectively, you are taking our kids down a very slippery, unhealthy slope. Please bring common sense back to education and give students a healthy environment to learn in. Get back to getting the low percentages up in reading, math, and other academics. Teach them life skills that will help the students, not hurt them. More and more families are taking their kids out of public schools and figuring out positive ways to educate their kids through homeschooling, private schools, and charter schools. Please help our future generations. Don't hurt them. This is hurting them. In addition, please bring back the Loveland High School girls' cross-country coach. Just because someone doesn't agree with your way of thinking doesn't mean they should lose their job. I will pray, I will pray that you will make the right decisions for our community, families, and kids. Thank you.
Frank Torres?
I'm here tonight to ask the board to launch an internal investigation against a handful of district employees that failed when it came to the firing of my wife, Loveland High School's cross-country and track coach, Mrs. Torres. I'm asking you to investigate the mismanagement of the situation by several district employees. The situation also exposes their failure as district leaders to support and provide guidance to Mrs. Torres when she asked for help in this situation. Instead, this leadership failed to act and in some cases hid from the situation, ensuring they distanced themselves from the issue. Former athletic director Andy Little failed to take action back in September of 2023 when this was first brought to his attention. He failed to mention it to District AD Kevin Clark, who did nothing. When the official complaint came months later, Mr. Little lied, then denied, and then ran off to Pooter School District. District Athletic Director Kevin Clark, one would assume that our district athletic director would be well aware of this situation. Well, he was not. He wasn't made aware of it until Ms. Torres had already been fired. Instead, he cowardly avoided the situation so he could completely, so he could have complete deniability, only to protect himself. And I tell you, as a coach in this district, that is not leadership that I want. Principal Sean Collins, his defamation of Ms. Torres by speaking on the situation that he had no firsthand exposure with was blurring the lines between athletics and academics. It would seem that Mr. Collins had a personal agenda against Ms. Torres and seized the opportunity as a way to punish Ms. Torres. District HR, the most egregious behavior was how this group neglected to do their job in a fair and biased manner. There is no, sorry. Their mismanagement of the investigation and improperly following district policy needs to be reviewed, and these individuals held accountable. This is a long and tenured group that has gotten way too comfortable in their positions and feel that they are untouchable. And why not? Because they serve as judge, jury, and executioner when it becomes to matters of disciplinary matters in this district. There is no outside review of their decisions. They control the narrative and the flow of information that they deem reasonable in the investigation. Once the parent and student in this situation filed the formal complaint and asked for the firing of Coach Torres, the decision-makers were unfairly biased and left no other choice. Out of fear of litigation against the district, they took the easy way out and used Ms. Torres as a scapegoat. This was clearly a witch hunt from the beginning and had no outcome. The rest of the actions were a facade.
Megan Locke? Megan Locke?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dr. Megan Locke, and my daughter is a freshman at Loveland High School on the cross-country team. During her eighth and seventh and eighth grade years, she became a top-10 runner in the district and was very much looking forward to continuing her cross-country career at Loveland High School, under the leadership of Coach Torres. During Riley's middle school cross-country and track season, I can't even count how many individuals asked where she would be going to high school. And once they heard that she would be running under the leadership of Coach Torres, it became very clear the amount of respect that she had in the community. And it was not only in the running community, it was the general Loveland community as well. I have written several emails to individuals in the district after receiving the news that Coach Torres would be terminated as head coach of the Loveland Cross Country Team. I bring questions tonight for the Board of Education. Did Coach Torres break any rules? Was there a paper trail, or did a problem appear out of nowhere? Did Coach Torres ask the principal and athletic director for guidance, and did she receive support? Did the athletic director drop in at any cross-country practices or meets to observe Coach Torres and the other athletes? Did the Loveland High School athletic director make any attempt to inform Coach Torres of any deficiencies and then give her time to correct those deficiencies if they existed? Did the athletic director, human resources, and others involved in the decision to terminate Coach Torres interview other parents, athletes, and assistant coaches that were part of the 2023 Loveland High School and track teams? If so, were they interviewed prior to making the decision to terminate her, and did their statements carry any weight? Did Coach Torres violate a contract? Did she have poor graduation rates or grades among the running athletes? Did she have a poor competitive record or other areas of job performance? Did Coach Torres have the opportunity to have a hearing with you, the Board of Education? Was there clear written communication? Was there clear written communication to Coach Torres that failure to remedy the deficiency, if there was one, would result in termination? I request that the Board of Education open an investigation to determine if the termination of Coach Torres was warranted and the only solution. The questions above need to be answered with evidence. I would also like to take the opportunity to thank Coach Sedg for stepping up and leading the cross-country team during this transition. Thank you.
My name is Colleen Torres, and I'm here to put a face with a name. To be represented by this community is very humbling, and thank you to everyone who's come out to speak on my behalf. I'm asking you, as the Board of Education, to consider what your community is saying tonight. Your job is to be the liaison between all of them and our district leadership. Clearly, there is some discrepancy with how things are being handled by our district administrators and what is expected by our community. I ask you to please listen to these people today and consider what is happening in our schools. The corruption in this district is real, and it has to stop. It is affecting not only coaches, but teachers, students, athletes, families, all of whom you represent in this community. These are the people who will be voting on your bond and mill levy in the upcoming election in November. Their voices are more important than anyone else's. Please listen and hear what they're saying. We need you to hold district leadership accountable for their actions. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, staff, some of whom I recognize, but you haven't aged a bit. I was here years and years ago. I brought robotics into the district, into various schools. At one point, I chaired the District Accountability Committee. And today, I came here to say, I wanted to initially say, we used to have a discipline report that was in the board packet quarterly so that we could really see if the money being spent on the various programs were effective against the bullying and whatever else is going on in schools, because I think the teachers are having a really hard time right now. But I don't see that report anymore, and I'd like to see that come back. So that was one thing I came here to ask for. The other was, as a recovering engineer, in 2016, I scraped 1,420 items off of the building performance reports for the last MLO bond. And this is the list. And, you know, I look at where we say what we've done, and I just can't put the two together. So I wonder if I really have enough information when I think about going after another bond. And it's probably out there, it's probably just me, that I'm just not finding it, but maybe there's others, too. And then I also thought I was going to come here to say, on the budget, I've looked at a lot of different school district budgets, and most of them have a preamble in the beginning that talks about the assumptions, the big things that have changed the budget over, you know, the past year. Some of you even go put in like graduation year-over-year or places they've been successful so that you can track it back to the money being spent. But we don't have any of that when you go and click on the budget here. And I feel like it's needed, and I know there was a meeting on a Monday back in June, but I don't know how many people went. And I think it'd be really helpful to everybody who wants to go look at where our money is going if that preamble was in there. And I think, I don't want more work for staff, because I know the staff already has a lot of work. I think to have a committee to help put together what it would be to create that transparency would be a fabulous thing, because I definitely don't want to create myself. But now I'm thinking, I didn't really want to say any of those things, because now all I want to say is reinstate Coach Torres. And let's think about the policies that apparently the parents' community are just not liking. Let's just figure out how to straighten that out. Thank you.
I'm here also to speak on behalf of Coach Torres. My name is Zach Wheatley. My son is a senior at Loveland High School and has been involved in both the cross-country and track programs since he was a freshman. I am here to express my sadness and concern about the dismissal of Coach Torres, process for which she was relieved from her coaching position is wrong. Through this process, no one from the school district ever reached out to any of the athletes or students involved in these programs. Wasn't until about a month ago that Coach Torres met with all of us to let us know that she no longer had the position. That was the first knowledge that any of us had on this. I would have to say that I, along with everyone here, think this is a big deal and want to know why we weren't involved or informed from the school district beforehand. So I ask the School Board and all facility teachers, administrators, to remember, we are here to serve the students. As parents, we want the best for our students. We want to be informed, involved with every decision that they may encounter at school or at extracurricular activities, athletics, for any reason. I'm sure many of you have students in the school district and understand how important this is to all of us. And it's just a shame to see that such a beloved coach is no longer the coach. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I am not here to talk about transgender rights or anything like that, but I would like to address how a decision was made to terminate spending a lifetime in employment labor law, human resources, owning several businesses in our community. I have to do and make those decisions at times. So I'm not here to state opinions. I would just like to ask some questions for you guys to consider. First question would be, what compelling evidence was presented to the individual or this group that caused the decision of removal to be made? If there has not been a formal policy adopted by the district and drafted in regards to this type of alleged discrimination based on a student's preferred legal name, then how was a decision made of termination, and who was that decision-maker? What compelling evidence was presented that this alleged discriminatory action was a pattern of behavior by this coach and teacher? And then, has this board considered the recent Supreme Court decision in regards to Title IX ruling that took place five days ago? What precedents have been set within this district that you followed as a guideline to make this decision for Coach Torres? And then what evidence was presented to you or the decision-makers in this termination that was considered in regards to this teacher's past behavior? What formal training and education was provided to Coach Torres, acknowledged and documented by her, that took place for this coach to be able to handle situations like this? Was this coach provided with any formal requests by the student or the student's family to make any special considerations? My final question for you guys to consider would just be, what is the cost? The cost that was considered in regards to making a decision of termination for the coach and in regards to the athletes when this decision was made? Thank you.
It's my writing. You're good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for entertaining all of us this evening and our comments. I'm here to speak on behalf of Coach Torres. Sorry. It was amazing. The administrative stuff, I find it brutally ironic that on your agenda this evening, you're going to approve readings regarding gender transition plans, gender support plans, name gender change forums, and yet a decision was made to terminate an above-average instructor and coach in this district based on gender topics, apparently, allegedly. I don't have all the facts. So a little sick irony there. By the way, thank you Nancy Rumfelt and Barbara Cruz for your responses and Dr. Schaefer for your responses via email and the rest of you. So I assume you got my email, my questions, many of which other folks have asked and also submitted. This whole process has been sus, as our kids say these days, right? Been a little sus. So I invite the board to have a chat with some people who may have been involved in the decision, maybe do a little investigation, third party preferably, so that we don't have the corrupt fingertips of the involved parties, or corrupt lightly, but you get my point. Finally, a quick sidebar story. These children suffered through COVID. I all know that story. My son, outgoing athlete, COVID hits, hoodie, introvert, complete flip-flop. Tried to run in middle school, got injured, ran as best he could, went out for Coach Torres' team last fall, ran cross-country. Got his varsity letter. Super proud dad. Tells me, before we go to NXR, I hate running. NXR, sorry. Nike-sponsored race in Arizona. That was a come-to-Jesus conversation in the car, let me tell you, because I had spent a lot of money getting ready to take him to Arizona. He runs, we have a great time. We go through winter, he goes out for track, he runs for Coach Torres, he gets his letter. He runs a five-minute and one-second mile. My son ran over 500 miles this summer. He rode his bike over 500 miles this summer to train for Loveland High School's cross-country team. And a decision was made to terminate Coach Torres. That is heartbreaking for a kid that came out of the hoodie and has turned into an amazing, amazing, over-six-foot young man who is a stellar student-athlete at the school. I invite you to reconsider this decision that has been made by your folks. Thank you very much.
My name is Sean Murphy. I'm an architect. I have two daughters and one son in T S D schools, and I have the honor of serving as the mayor pro tem for the town of Berthoud. Let it be known that these views are my own and not representative of the Board of Trustees nor the town of Berthoud. I'm here for two reasons. One, I do support the empathetic and considerate gender policy put forth before the board tonight that promotes inclusion and support for select students. Secondly, I am here to support the resolutions proposed for the November ballot tonight. Strong-quality schools are the beating heart of our communities. As a steward of the public's treasure, I do my best to run our government efficiently and effectively, to promote the general welfare of Berthoud citizens and to preserve our small-town quality of life. Yet the most essential component to that is not in my hands, but it's in yours. Making investments in educator compensation, space upgrades, safety and security, HVAC, maintenance improvements, and additional facilities can dramatically improve the learning environment for our students, staff, and educators. It can also improve test scores and save the district substantial sums of money in the lifetime of each one of these facilities. With the growth we face in Berthoud and throughout northern Colorado, it's not just desired, but imperative for the school district to take action this year, keep our kids equipped for the future. Strongly urge that you move forward with these resolutions to make these critical proactive improvements possible. I'm always happy to partner with the district's goals and initiatives, and you have my personal word and support. Thank you.
My name is Deanne Olson from Loveland, and I'm calling regarding the termination of cross-country coach Colleen Torres. I have several concerns regarding the process by which this happened, and I have emailed questions to the entire board, Dr. Schaefer, Kevin Clark, and the athletic director, the new athletic director, Brandon Havard. Thanks to Nancy Rumfelt and Brandon Havard for responding to me. I didn't get a reply from anyone else. Well, I guess I did get an auto reply from Dr. Schaefer, that he acknowledged receipt of my email, but honestly, that's worse than not replying at all. That's like saying, I got your email, but it's not worth a response. Bill Seabirds emailed me, saying he got my email and wanted to know if I had any questions. I replied that I didn't send an email to him, but apparently my email was forwarded to him, and that email had like five questions. So yeah, those questions are my questions. No response. I read several T S D policies that had me concerned that due process wasn't followed, and I'm further concerned with the lack of response from the leaders of T S D, making me feel that I'm right to be concerned about how T S D handles this matter. It means if proper process was followed, there'd be a lot of confidence about their decision, and a response would be easily provided. Three minutes on this line doesn't allow me to express all my concerns, but once again, they are clearly available via my email. Briefly, why wasn't there a suspension or administrative leave, or any students, athletes, or witnesses interviewed? Why was the board, why wasn't the board made aware at the time of the investigation? What training or guidance was provided to Coach Torres? Why was this matter ongoing since February but a termination decision was made two weeks prior to season start? I would like the investigators of this termination to be investigated. Again, my name is Deanne Olson. My phone number is 970-402-3854. My email address, if you would like to reference my questions and respond, I would greatly appreciate it. Deanne, D-E-A-N-N-E, M as in Mary, Olson, O-L-S-O-N, at gmail dot com.
Hi, my name is Susan Van Meekens. I am a Loveland resident, a retired educator and current substitute teacher in the district, and I'm just calling to voice my support for air conditioners in the schools. The kids need them, we need them, let's get them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Katie Himmelberg. I live in Loveland. I'm not a student at T S D, but I am the parent of two students who attend Thompson School District schools. I wanted to comment in support of the board's adapting the gender identity forms and processes that support their students. I think it's important to have these in place for the students who need them and their families who are supportive of them. I can also be contacted at Himmelberg, H-I-M-M-E-L-B-E-R-G, Katie, K-A-T-I-E, 70, at gmail dot com.
My name is Yvonne.
My name is Elizabeth Newton. Today, I'm calling in support of any policy that protects and uplifts transgender kids. I want to tell you a story about Samantha Bartz, a transgender woman who said that she knew early on, no later than second grade, that she was different. Her parents had called her Michael, but she felt like a girl inside. She says my inner self never went away, it was me. When she was growing up, she was too afraid to share her feelings with her parents or anyone else. She was afraid that they wouldn't understand and they might reject her. She imagined that her sibling's classmate or neighborhood friends were ridicule or ostracize her. She worried that she was dissipating God's Word in some way. She also wondered, "Am I mentally ill or sick?" And she kept her secret locked deep inside for years and paid the price later as an adult. Kids are too young to be motivated by any desire to make a political or cultural statement. They're most often preposterous and not thinking or feeling much of anything about the birds and bees. Transgender kids are simply kids. Like their non-gender peers, they are learning about themselves and developing them each passing day. They deserve and need love and support as they grow. However, it's increasingly difficult today's culture with the many hostile voices tearing down transgender people on social media, at school board meetings, and at home, which are all readily available to all kids. Today, I am urging all adults to open up their own hearts and minds to transgender youth. These kids, whether living in their birth home, with relatives, or in foster homes, need the embrace of loving adults to help them thrive. The difficult truth, however, is that too many adults, for whatever reason, are unable to interact with the transgender youth in a positive and affirming way. Whether it's an adult friend, a teacher, a social worker, a coach, or counselor, you, as a caring adult in their life of transgender child, can make an enormous difference in that child's emotional well-being and sense of self-worth. Listen carefully to these kids. Provide affirming guidance informed by what they communicate. Accept them. Thank you.
I'm Lori Vista Ward, and I live in Loveland. I'm speaking today in support of the updated gender support guidelines originally adopted in 2021. It is important that Thompson School District keep these and other policies current and in line with state and federal regulations in order to properly serve students and to protect the district from adverse legal action. On a personal note, I am grateful for the existence of these guidelines and the guidance my family received during my son's time as a TSD student. He is currently a happy, healthy college student due in large part to the education he received here in Thompson School District. Which brings me to the other item on your agenda that I want to address. Thank you for the time and effort that TSD staff, Board members, and the District Master Plan Committee have invested in developing an excellent plan for a bond and get-free schools mill levy. The bond would provide additional programming in career and technical education, safety and security equipment such as secured vestibules, and improved air conditioning in our schools. The mill levy would allow for increased compensation for teachers and other staff, technology replacements, and funds for ongoing building, maintenance, and repairs. I urge you all to vote in support of these two items tonight so that Thompson School District can continue to provide our children with the opportunities and outcomes we've come to expect. I can be reached at LoriVistaWard@gmail.com. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kayla Marie Crockett. I am a citizen of the city of Loveland. I'm calling in regards to the roster termination of Coach Colleen Torres, and I am a parent of a child in the Thompson School District. I, as I said, have children on a Loveland High cross-country team and in the district, and I have since had a child on the team since 2018. And all three of my children have been coached by Colleen Torres. Colleen Torres has an impeccable track record both on and off the field, pun intended. She is known for her skills and professionalism and has a reputation for being an incredible coach, mentor, and teacher in the district. Last fall, accusations were brought against Coach Torres by an athlete. No other families were made aware of this situation during that season nor during the spring track season. During her investigation, not one single student, athlete, coach, or parent was contacted or questioned. How can this be considered a fair investigation when no other parties were involved other than the accuser and the accused? How were no witnesses called or questioned? As a parent, I find this concerning and alarming on many levels. A simple Google search provides information on Thompson Board policies regarding staff disciplinary actions and investigations. District procedures were clearly not followed in this instance. The HR decision to fire Torres was not based on fact, nor was a proper investigation given. They did not do a fair nor impartial job and are clearly prejudiced against Colleen Torres. The parties responsible chose to place the concerns and opinions and ideas of one student above the needs of every other athlete on both the cross-country and track teams. Thompson School District did not follow their own policies and procedures that should be applied to protect students and staff. As a board, you need to be aware that this situation happened, investigate it fully and impersonally. Bill Sebers and Kevin Clark should both be equally investigated, held accountable, and disciplined for failing to do their job properly and wrongly terminating Colleen Torres. As athletes, students, and parents in the district, we deserve and we demand better. Again, my name is Kayla Crockett, and I can be reached at 970-227-1736. Thank you.
My name is Lauren Haug. I am a Loveland resident, Madam President, members of the Board, and Dr. Schaefer. I am calling in today to request that the Thompson School District's Board of Education approve the bond and special mill tonight so it will be on our ballots this November. I have three students at Big Thompson Elementary School. While Big Thompson is one of the schools in our district lucky enough to have air conditioning, our air conditioning system does not work an entire wing of our school building. My oldest son started fifth grade at Big T this year, and every day since school started, he has come home complaining about the heat and how hard it is for him to focus on anything going on in the classroom, especially in the afternoon. I've spoken with his teacher almost every day, and she agrees that her entire class is having a hard time focusing on important school-based activities because of the heat. Money provided by the bond and special mill will be put to work to make sure our schools have functioning air conditioning so that our students can thrive in the classroom, even when we have weeks with outside temperature in the 90s. If passed in November, these measures will also help grow our district career and technical education programs for high schoolers as well as free up money in the district's general budget to help improve salaries for teachers and staff. As an invested member here in the Loveland community and a parent of TSD students, I ask you to approve these measures for the November 2024 ballot. Thank you.
My name is Pam Howard, and I am calling in to support and encourage the Thompson Board of Education to vote yes on putting a bond and a special mill levy on this November's ballot. Our local schools are the absolute heart and soul of our community. Our students deserve the finest education possible. In order to do this, we must maintain and upgrade each of our 32 buildings so that they are safe and secure spaces to learn. And it is time to increase teacher salaries. We need to be competitive with other districts so that Thompson can attract and retain the highest-quality teachers for our students. Education is all about helping create the future leaders of our community and of our country. So, let's come together to support our local Thompson students and teachers. Thank you for your time and your dedication. This is Pam Howard. I live in Loveland, Colorado, and you can reach me at 970-691-2224. Thank you.
My name is Lauren Haug. I am a Loveland resident, Madam President, members of the Board, and-
All right, I think we'll work through just the first part and then just move into the break so people can get up and- All right, we're moving into action consent items. Okay. These items that we're going to talk about are ones that we've had presented to us previously in our study sessions and are here for approval. I'm going to read through the list, and I'll ask the Board members if they have any items that they would like to have pulled. The list is, I like eight items. So, I'm going to just go let you know what they are. 5.1 and 5.2 basically go together. Not sure how they got separated, but it's approval of personnel, extra duty, and coaching recommendations. 5.3 is the approval of expenditures over $50,000. 5.4 is the approval of second reading of AC-E3 gender support guidelines. 5.5 is the approval of second reading of AC-E4 gender transition plan. 5.6, approval of second reading AC-E5 gender support plan. And 5.7 is the approval of second reading AC-E6 and name gender change form. 5.8 is the approval of 2023-2024 supplemental budget update. So, if there are any members who have wished to speak to any of these or have them moved to a different place on our agenda, would you let me know?
Yes, I would like to remove. Oops, that's really wrong.
It is. I've got that all night.
My numbers are different from what you were reading. So, I would like to pull 5.3.
Which is starting with which one?
The reading of ACE3 gender support guidelines.
Yeah, okay.
5.4, ACE4 gender transition plan. And 5.5, reading of ACE5 gender support form.
Okay, and those then will be moved to discussion action items, and they'll be- I have it here, just give me a minute. 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4. Okay? All right. So, is it all right? Are you okay if we proceed with voting on the remaining items? So, that would be just voting on the approval of the personnel, extra duty, approval of expenditures over $50,000, and the approval of the 2023-2024 supplemental budget update.
And E6. I didn't pull E6. I didn't pull E.
So, which ones?
I only pulled-
You didn't pull 6.
Yeah, I did pull 6.
Okay, thank you.
I only pulled E3, E4, E5.
Okay, so the name gender change form stays?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. It was a stupid idea. Or I wasn't listening closely. That could be true. All right, so this one, all right. All right, I will take a motion to go ahead and take the motion that we approve the items that are remaining on our action consent.
So, moved.
Is it that way? Want me to separate them out?
Well, so for clarity, can you please repeat the items and the corresponding numbers so it's very clear?
Okay. I better get the agenda that you guys left because apparently mine isn't matching. Okay, so we will be approving 5.1, personnel, extra duty, coaching recommendations, 5.2, approval of expenditures of $50,000, approval of 5.6, approval of second reading AC-E6 name gender change form, and 5.7, approval of the 2023-2024 supplemental budget. Correct? Okay. Thank you.
So, moved. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question then. Does, I am, that was 5.6.
Stays where it is on our action consent.
But does it keep the same number?
Oh, we'll probably have to read the number of hours.
Okay.
Yeah. Laura Lee will do that for us, correct?
I have it as 5.1 through 5.4. So, 5.1 would be approval of personnel, extra duty, coaching. 5.2, approval of expenditures over $50,000.
Mm-hmm.
5.3, approval of second reading AC-E6 name gender change form, and 5.4, approval of 23-24 supplemental budget.
That's what I have as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, did I have first or a second? A first?
Second.
Thank you. A first from Dawn, a second from Denise. All right. I think we can ask you to call the ball.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lesa. Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
Motion carries. Six to zero. I'm kind of thinking. All right, so we have completed our action consent, so now we're going to move into our discussion action items. And the first item will be, let me find that spot. 6.1 will be the approval of the second reading of AC-E3 gender support guidelines. And I'm going to ask Dr. - is that right? No, they have to be put in front. So, Dr. Schneider, do you want to come up and help us with that? Yeah. Sorry. Not a problem. Good evening, Madam President, members of the School Board, and Dr. Schaefer. And I will also invite Carrie Bartman, our Director of Assessment and Evaluation, who originally presented these forms as well. That's all right. This is Pat Horberg, and Nancy pulled it, so I'm going to ask Nancy to speak to them.
And this one, we're- We're currently speaking on the E3, correct?
Yes, E3.
Okay. So, first, I would like to just make sure that this is clear. This is not about the right or wrong of transgenders. This is about, for me, and I think many parents, the lack of parental consent being included here. I did read House Bill 241039. There is zero mention of parents, zero. You can search that document, it's not in there. Same with Guardian. There is nothing in here about or wrong about protecting parents' right to direct the mental and medical care of their children. And children who have gender dysphoria absolutely, like one of the callers said, needs the love, care, support, and guidance of their parents. If this form, these forms included parental consent, it'd be great. Again, they weren't put on there the first time. I have asked for it repeatedly. Even now, I'm still asking for parental consent to be put on because that is their First and Fourteenth Amendment, right? And in fact, there is now a case going on over Brighton. I believe it's a Brighton School District that was filed on August 7 in relation to this very same issue. So, I would hope that we could avoid that same issue. For E3, it's also important to note, someone brought up about inclusion. If this was inclusive for all kids because there's equal protection for everyone under the Fourteenth. So, if we're going to say that one class of group of kids can request certain accommodations, you have to request and allow all students to request accommodations. If they would like privacy in the locker room, then they should be granted the same thing. If they want their own hotel room because they do not want to share, they should be granted the same thing. It's all about equal protection. This is about ensuring all students are given that access and that right. And with the transgenders in sports, again, this goes back to, I would like someone, and no one has told me the answer to this yet, how are we protecting our biological females who play sports, who have to wrestle against the biological male? Because clearly, it's not the same. There have been injuries. And I would like to know, other than we're following the state and federal law, I would like to know how this policy protects our female, biological female students because there's not anything in there. And I have yet for anyone to tell me. A, that's one, and the second one is parents. There is no reason we can't have parent parental consent required. They're not our kids.
Madam President, may I? I find it abhorrent that we would say, we keep saying that women are less than men in this entire argument. It's absolutely disgusting to me. If we're going to be spouting opinion, I want to make sure that that's out there because I am not less than any man. And I would like to know of all these facts of people being hurt, how many athletes are hurt, period, and have been in segregated sport? and have been in segregated sports? I mean, it's just interesting to cherry pick that, um, I I, being that all of that was built on a logical fallacy, and we are talking about doing state and federal laws, because that is what we're obligated to do and what our oath told us to do, our opinion on this doesn't hold up.
Federal and state laws.
I'm sorry, this isn't up for debate.
Yeah, and you have a chance to speak.
Okay.
Um, I wanna confirm that the comment that was made in the call in, it sounds like I'm deviating from the topic, I'm not. The comment that was made that what we're doing tonight is updating the language of these four exhibits. We are not debating the policy, we're not updating the policy itself, we're updating the language, uh, probably on recommendation of our legal team. And that's what we're doing, we're changing words to conform with the best thinking now from the legal community. Carrie, you're shaking your head.
Yes.
Melissa, you're now shaking your head as well.
That's right.
Um, the policies themselves, uh, the these exhibits, they're not policies.
That's right.
That we're working at, they are four exhibits.
Correct.
Are based on state and federal law. And as a school board, we don't dictate state and federal law, but we do have the opportunity to update language. And that's what our legal department is suggesting that we do. Am I correct? That's what the, one of the callers said, that's my understanding as well, but I'd like to make sure that my understanding is correct before we continue discussion of this.
These, yes, you are correct, these were not content, uh, changing edits. These were edits to update ourselves to current statute. Our original forms that came in, I believe back in twenty twenty one, did not have any signature lines. And we felt that it was important to include, any plan for student in our school district does have signature lines of attendees of the meeting, including I E P gifted, uh, whatever type of educational plan there is, so we wanted to have those lines added to capture that. Uh, there were a few other edits that were perfunctory, but as you stated, this is an exhibit of a policy, it is not a policy itself. So any changes to an exhibit would have to be the outflowing of a change to a policy.
That corroborates my understanding of what we are about tonight, thank you.
Denise or Amy, do you have comments? Does Amy have any comment?
Amy, do you have comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. Um, I will take a motion to approve the the reading, the second reading of A C dash E three, uh, gender support guidelines.
So moved.
I'll second that.
So first from Dawn and a second from Stu. Laurlee, would you please call the ball?
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam. Nancy Rumpel.
No.
Okay, our next item will be six point two, please stay there, okay girls? Approval of the second reading of A C dash E four gender transition plan. And Nancy, you wanna speak to that one?
Um, yes, again, if we, I understand that these are just exhibits, but we are updating them, so again, since we're updating them on E four, why not also add and include the parental consent signature line? And please, if you're going to tell me it's against the law to do so, then please state clearly what law you are citing.
We are being consistent with all of our educational plans in the district, whether it's an I E P, a gifted and talented education plan, English Language Development Plan, any sort of student support plan has optional signature lines. We aren't going to move forward with like a not doing an, uh, a plan that is best for the student in our schools because a parent doesn't show up to a meeting, but the the student does have the right to initiate and to assert their gender identity according to our Colorado statute, which is part of the information that we sent you to your questions.
Um, I did not hear you explain to me what's federal or state law is why you're basing excluding parents from this.
Point of order, can we not be rude to staff? Yeah, it was, thank you very much.
If parents are attend, in attendance of this meeting, they will sign the document. So any person that would be in attendance of any of these meetings, they will have the opportunity to sign the document, just as a teacher, a counselor, the student themselves, whomever is there to talk through whatever plan we have, as Melissa said, with the I E Ps, five oh fours, et cetera, so any of these plans, parents, you know, if they are in attendance, they will sign the form.
Are parents notified of the meeting?
Of the gender support plan meeting?
On this gender transition plan?
There is not a notification on this.
So the parents are notified, so it becomes a conventional. Notified.
This is a FERPA record, and the parents have access to it.
If they, they could access if they were aware it was happening, but they're not aware, okay.
I will take a motion to approve the second reading of A C E four.
So moved.
Sir.
Dawn and Stu. Denise, I forgot to ask, Denise, did you have a comment or Amy?
I do, Dawn.
Okay.
Amy, did you have a comment?
No.
I'm sorry, Amy. All right, um, Laurlee, you can call the ball, please.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam. Nancy Rumpel.
No.
All right, six point three, the approval of the second reading of A C E five, which is the gender support plan.
So it's just another repeat, why can't we just add the parental consent signature on here? And are, there is a meeting for this one, are the parents notified so that they could attend? And what state law are you basing this on?
While you're searching, um, is Title Nine the basis of some of the the laws that affect
Yes.
the language and the policy thems, the policies themselves and the exhibits?
That is correct.
Yes, thank you.
It is, uh, another same change, just the exact same signature lines of who attended the meeting.
And are the parents notified of the meeting?
The parents are notified, uh, based on, we we work a student towards disclosure to parents. Would be very straightforward with you. We work a student towards disclosure, but a student might not be ready, and they can actually initiate this process. And it is, again, not based on something that the law says we can't invite parents to. So that language you won't find in law, but what you will find is it, it is a person's innate sense of gender identity. Agree with it or not, it's Colorado statute, it drives a person to be able to say, I am this gender, and I'm gonna use this restroom that is in our state statute. And so it is, it is the right of the person who feels their gender identity to assert their gender identity.
And so as Stu mentioned on the Supreme Court, or the Title Nine, so the Supreme Court has did a ruling last week, so if it turns out that those Title Nine changes do not get allowed to move forward.
We would have policy updates to do.
Uh, hold please though, because state law has been in place for much longer, and that supersedes federal law in this case, correct? Cause it's.
And again, we would change the policy at that point in time, these again are just exhibits, so we're updating the point of the exhibit. Anything that would follow, we would have to go through and update the entire policy at that point in time.
And the exhibits to go with it, correct.
So Title Nine is federal.
Correct.
And based on what is just stated, a state. We don't have to follow Title Nine then, since it's, we we have our own state law, is that what you're?
No, what I'm saying is that we have a state law that is the basis of the gender policy that you have in place. It predates the Title Nine changes or the ones that are being debated.
Um, a question, Dr. Schaefer. We will be directed to change policy by our legal team, correct? They're the ones who will analyze, uh, this new Supreme Court's, uh, decision, et cetera, or any other changes. They're the ones who will tell us if we are in compliance, is that correct?
That's correct, so we are, um, currently consulting with our legal team, uh, to evaluate, um, um, changes. Um, we certainly, any any proposals, uh, certainly, uh, that would impact our current A C policies, we would bring forward to the board, um, as proposed changes, so. Um, those may be forthcoming, um, at this time, we're considering exhibits, not policy. Um, but we are, um, working closely with our, uh, legal team to evaluate, um, currently some holding of the state current laws.
Thank you. Okay, I will take a motion to approve second reading E C, A C E five.
So.
Second.
Stu, Denise, Dawn. Laurlee, would you call the ball?
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam. Nancy Rumpel.
No.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you. Six point four, so consider resolution calling on election on November five of twenty twenty four for the bond initiative. Okay, I'm I'm wondering. Okay.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, I'm Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for Thompson School District. Um, this agenda item in front of the board tonight is, um, for consideration of approval for a, um, potential, um, bond initiative, uh, on the November fifth, twenty twenty four ballot. This is, uh, information that was provided to the board at the last study session, as well as a, a, a significant amount of work by master planning committee, staff, a variety of people that have put this, um, uh, the, the, the work in on this to identify potential needs of the district. I will point out that from the study session that we had two weeks ago, when this was presented, um, embedded in the resolution is the actual ballot language, and there were slight changes to that language. Um, the two items that I will point out, um, are, in the bond question, uh, the language to be monitored by a citizens oversight committee has been added. And in the bullet points, um, following that, um, there was a grammatical issue of adding the, uh, I N G to those verbs to turn them into an action verb. Um, uh, it flows more grammatically correct with those changes. Um, nothing else has changed from what was presented to the board at the last study session.
Amy, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. Denise.
Um, on on the bond, I know that there's been a lot of work put into this, and and it is needed. My concern, my concern and my thoughts that I've had the last few days is, I'm not certain that this is the right time, because there are so many people who can't afford even to go to Walmart and buy their groceries. And at the same time, now the city of Loveland is going to put on the ballot a one percent tax increase. I I just, I am, I just don't believe that this is the right time, given the economic conditions for so many of our taxpayers who are struggling. I know that this is needed, but I, I just, I don't feel comfortable asking them to to give more money that they already can't even give for themselves to provide food for their kids and family.
Okay, Stu, any comment?
No.
No?
I, you know, I I think that the fact that this voted voters to make that decision is really important. Um, especially since, uh, all the messages that I've gotten today, um, around, um, the big, actually all week, from the beginning of the school year, has been around the things that we have on our backlog. Um, and, um, there are some major impacts that that, um, we have that are budget related. Um, the due diligence has been done by the master planning committee now for five years.
Two plus years.
Okay, yeah. Um, you know, and, uh, the staff time that's been put in to making sure that that we really ran this through its bases to to make sure that we were um, asking for something that was reasonable and, um, not overshooting the movement. I think that this is a package that does that. Um, we do have some of the lowest taxes, um, in the nation in our area. And I know that that is a small consolation when people are paying their bills, and at the same time, um, you know, education is is a critical component of living in a community. And, um, we have, in our community, had historically under, have not approved some of these in the past, and that has left us with a backlog that we've had, and we've done a tremendous job of maximizing the best grants, by the way, I bring those up because that's the other thing that people immediately ask, and they say, why don't we already have air conditioning? Because the, because, um, marijuana money only cleans a portion of all the needs of the state. We have been more successful than any school district in gaining those best grants. Um, I'm amazed with what our district has done to extend and expand on that, we've been amazing stewards. And I'm, um, I think that putting the trust in the district to vote on this, um, as an individual, but then on ballot, okay, you guys have proven that, I mean, you've done your due diligence. So I think that we should putting in front of people to make their own decision about whether they wanna support our schools or not, because we have a lot of people telling us that they, that they need the things that are on our list.
Stu, you said you had something you wanted to add?
Yes, while Dawn was was speaking, I did think of something else. Uh, as most of you probably know, the community was surveyed about, uh, a variety of issues relating to the bond issue and some other things. And the amount of, uh, two hundred and twenty million dollars, which is the amount that's suggested by this potential bond issue, uh, received the highest number of votes, for lack of a better term, am I right, Todd? Two hundred and twenty million was
Yes.
was the one that received the the most support from the community. So I think we need to honor, uh, the wishes of those who com, who completed the survey. Um, yeah.
I just feel that, um, we went on quite a dry spell years ago, and our schools were neglected terribly, and I think that we were able to do a lot with our last one, and we are, we focused on doing that. But it doesn't stop there. Repairing buildings never stops, there's constantly work that needs to be done. It touches every school in our district. And we are overcrowded, inverted, so we know we have to address that. If we wait and think, oh, we'll try it another time, it's not gonna get any better, it's just gonna be harder and harder. So I totally, a hundred percent support this. So, any other comments? And Denise, one?
Okay, I just the, you know, continuing to defer maintenance only is going to increase the cost on what it takes to bad underbuildings or to repair these units. And as our students have sat for the first week and a half, um, you know, in heat, in heat and coming home red faced and exhausted, I, you know, we have buildings that have air conditioning, we have buildings that have air conditioning, but it doesn't work. Um, and then we have buildings that have no air conditioning. And that's a really inequitable, um, learning space for our kids. Um, and I think that in order to give everyone a good education, we should put it before the voters. And we keep hearing from, um, the, you know, the R H line and all these other next door and, um, like everyone's up in arms about not having no air conditioning, let's give them a chance to vote on it. Um, because our kids, and mine came home and fell asleep, and we were just wiped out. And I know for those of you who have kids in the audience that don't have access to air conditioning, it's a long day to sit at ninety some drinks down the bathroom. And how much can they actually learn, when you just bring about, when you're trying to drink a water?
Um, I, Amy, didn't, I thought I asked her, maybe not.
Oh, Amy, do you have any comment on the law?
Um, you know, I would just like to.
Um, you know, I would just like to echo what Stu and Denise and Don said. You know, we put this out there to the voters when we surveyed the community, we have done due diligence. You know, I feel confident that the voter, like what Denise said, the voters need the opportunity to decide. And yes, we hear about the dangers of the heat for our students, staff. You know, and we want to be a, you know, destination of the school district and keeping maintenance and repair and good employees, and that does cost money. But again, I think that we need to give our voters the opportunity to decide, to learn more about what we are proposing. I feel that we have done due diligence, we, you know, have robust study sessions, and, you know, we're very well informed about this. And I think it's only why is that, you know, we put this to the voters. And of course, you know, we have the guardrails of the M A C, and so yeah, that's that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow, so the survey that was sent in, I think we had, correct me, Todd, I think we had three thousand five hundred responses? Or? Somewhere around there. And so I think that's important. I also know that bonds are, these elections cost us money. In December, we had a chance to get back to the community, and we could have lowered the mills slightly, which would have gone a long ways, and I, you may not want to hear this, but there are still a lot of angry voters about the U R A vote to divert tax monies to Centerra South. And I just still believe that this may not be the right time, that maybe next year when hopefully the economy improves, that that would be a better time. I just don't know that citizens, they may want it, and I want it, but I don't think they have the money.
Madam President, it's on me. Board member Rumfeld. Just a clarification on the U R A situation for the district, the MOU, the memorandum of understanding that's in place. There are dollars that were pledged from the district as part of the School Finance Act that are backfilled by the state under the current and the recently passed legislation to backfill. Whatever's not collected locally is backfilled by the state. There's specific language in that agreement that says anything for any future adoption of bonds or any mill levy assessment that might be put in place has no diversion to the U R A. So I appreciate the opportunity to respond to that.
You are correct. I just think the voters, they don't see it the same way, so I just, that's all I can say.
I understand.
I'm going to take a motion, please, to approve the resolution calling an election on November five twenty twenty four for the bond initiative. So moved.
So.
Second.
From the duo down here. Don and Stu. I don't know, what was that? I don't know where that came from. I've been hearing it somewhere along the way, only thing. Laura Lee, I think you can call the roll.
Okay. Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin. Nancy Rumpel.
No.
The motion carries five to one. Six point five is consideration of resolution calling an election on November five twenty twenty four for the debt free schools initiative.
Thank you, Madam President. May I make one correction to an earlier comment I made ten minutes ago perhaps? The sentence that has been added, I said it was added to the language that "to be monitored by a citizens oversight committee" in both the bond and the potential debt free schools mill levy was in the original ballot language that the board saw last week. It was moved in that language to move it higher in the ballot question to become, put it in a more prominent position. So my apologies for the misstatement there. For the debt free schools mill levy, this is a separate part of statute, separate from the mill levy overrides that are authorized within Colorado State statute. This again was presented to the board last week in, or two weeks ago in the study session and other times leading up to that. No changes in this ballot language that's embedded in the resolution other than the movement of that statement to be monitored by the citizens oversight committee, moved higher in the ballot question to be able to have a more prominent place. That's the only adjustment that was made to this particular resolution or ballot language.
Anybody want to start? Okay.
I have a comment.
Of course.
So if someone else would go first. So on this levy, I understand that this debt free school mill levy, it's different from the way the normal levy works. And so I think it's important for the voters to understand that. I also think that it's important to recognize that because it is so new, and it is asking the voters to believe that we're going to put this money into a safe box. And I, my own personal opinion, that would be an easier sell along the way we had established a budget advisory committee and spent time deciding our budget spending priorities every year, which the board has not been open minded to. And so for that, I just think, again, timing is everything. I think this might do better next year because of the economic conditions. And I think if in that same time that you get this next year, if we put in place those things, I do believe that that would help with the voters understand and have more clarity about where and how we're setting our priorities and where the money is being spent.
Can you bring the comments?
Yeah, actually, I would, I would like to comment on that. We are the largest employer in the city, and when we think about the economy, our responsibility to helping our local economy has many layers. And when we pay our people well, it helps our economy. And that means that our, our community needs to support our educators in order for us to do that. And it's very symbiotic in the way that it's approached. And so I I just think that, you know, it strikes me that every year that you go with a less than ideal raise impacts you for the entire rest of your tenure. And we've had people who are working in this district who went many years without raises. In fact, many times they had to give back in the, in the past before any of us were here. And that's a debt that our community can't repay even if we do this. And so the least we can do is to, is to support our educators with our words and our deeds. And so I realize that I'm pushing for this a little harder than I meant to, but I do also feel really passionately about if I want to help my local economy, I've got to have a role and be sure I'm responsible for that. I take it very seriously that we're major employers and that this, our decisions impact people's livelihoods. And there's a lot that we, this is a tip in the bucket to why we need both educators. And on top of that, I also want to point out that like this entire initiative is near possible because of new legislation, which allows us to do this in a different way, which I thought was very exciting. And I'm actually frankly quite shocked at the way that this evening's debate has happened because this was somebody, somebody was a huge champion with this who's now a crappy Halliburton. It's not there.
Stu? Okay.
While Don was talking, I took out my copy of the ballot language of debt free schools. And in addition to the revenue generated going to staff compensation and benefits, the various parts, the money that's raised also goes to recurring capital maintenance and repair needs, technology enhancements, providing for safety and security of students and staff. So yes, compensation benefits is a part of it, and certainly an important part of it. But this particular type of mill levy benefits and affects more than just compensation and benefits, and I just read the list. So I just wanted to clarify.
I understand that it frees up portions of our budget that are earmarked towards construction, technology, and maintenance, and that maintenance is our big issue that we need to help cover for those unexpected maintenance issues that we have that are surprises like we all have in our houses. And so this is a way to have that support that we need for it. But if, if we don't need it, it's freeing up money that can go towards help services and such. So it's, am I correct in understanding that?
That is correct, and the dollars would remain in that dedicated fund. Statute calls for these dollars to go into a separate dedicated fund. And if they're not expended in one year, it doesn't mean they go to something else. They're available for that, those purposes that the board has just mentioned this evening in future years as well.
Okay, and Amy?
Amy, you're in. You know, I just wanted to say that, you know, these, this potential bond and this potential mill are both probably good ways to support kids getting to read at the third grade level. Like our board would, is supportive of, so, yep. Thank you very much, Gordon, for all of your work on this. Again, I think the board has done excellent work in, you know, looking at this from all angles. And in my opinion, it, you know, yeah, these are just good ways to help ensure that our kids have a good physical environment, good learning environment to help them get to that third grade reading level. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take a motion to approve the resolution calling an election on November five twenty twenty four for the debt free schools initiative.
So.
Second.
So Stu and then Don. Laura Lee, would you please call the roll?
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin. Nancy Rumpel.
No.
Motion passes five to one. All right, do we need a little teeny break, or are we okay to keep going? Okay, we need to get up and move, I'm sorry, you guys had a chance to get up and a couple of times. We need to get up and move for now. We'll be back in a minute. We'll be back in a minute. Okay. Is ready now? Okay. All right, we can, uh, that's our agenda. And our first item on our discussion items will be seven point one, Alexander Mountain Fire update, and I think that's tied.
It is. Good evening, Madam President and Board Education. Dr. Schaefer, Todd Piccone, Assistant Superintendent of Operations. Tonight, let's do a brief introductory update on the Alexander fire. We talked about this last time, our study session, but to line with STRIVE 2025 to keep all our facilities safe and welcoming. Before I get into some of the thanks, there is a staff member here I'd like to publicly thank, and it is Jess Arnold. She's our environmental manager. So to go through some of the pieces that we did here, she really took that to heart and invested in the safe, invested in Big T to make sure everything we did was safe for our staff, students, and community. In saying that, the next things I'd like to give is to the Big T staff. It's, there's little angst when you're getting ready to start school and you can't get in your building. So just want to acknowledge the leadership in the building and all the staff, because real quick, they had to pivot and then pivot back to get their classrooms ready over the weekend to then start school. But what we did is, obviously, the fire now, it's near 100% contained. There's just continuing to monitor. We did a deep clean of the building. So when I say deep clean, literally, all the pieces and parts in the building, including air ducts, were cleaned, because there was pretty significant smoke smell and even some debris from the fire. Because the hard work of staff and the contracts we hired, the Big T staff was actually able to get in there early, so they were able to get in there over the weekend before school started to then get their classroom set up. So that did lower and help some of their angst. The other piece we did is look at all the exterior of the building, make sure it was clean and appropriate for kids to then go. And then ultimately, it was a pretty smooth start to the start of school. So all the backend work to make it happen, staff, kids showed up, and it was a pretty successful launch. So just want to provide a, you know, update on that. And then the communication that we did between the school community and then just on the district level to keep everyone informed of what we were doing, and then the progress was also ongoing. So just a quick update on where it is and what we have been doing and what we did do to get the kids in the building.
Are settled probably, or at least in the same place?
I don't know for sure, so I'd have to double check on that, yeah.
I just was curious. Yeah, I mean, it's still right there.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Just a quick question. Am I correct that neither Big T nor any of the other of our other schools actually sustained any damage from the fire? I mean, there was obviously the soot and some of the effects of the fire that affected Big T, but was there actual, was there any kind of permanent damage to any of the schools?
No, there was not. It's just the smoke damage, which is really the damage, but no, no physical damage to anything.
Okay, thank you. Right, thank you. Oh, yeah, I figured he was gonna bring Kristin up. I saw the, um, water quality update, seven point two.
Yes, thanks again, Madam President. I am going to invite Kristen Battegi, our Director of Operations, to review our lead in drinking water testing update that we've previously reviewed with the board.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Dr. Schaefer, I'm Kristen Battegi, Director of Operations, pleased to be here tonight to talk about a lead in drinking water testing update. So this connects closely with STRIVE 2025, of course, ensuring our facilities are safe. So this update that we'll be providing today just talks about making sure that our drinking water is safe and meets the standard set forth by the state. So this may be a familiar topic. We presented on this a few years ago. After voluntary sampling that we did, we pursued a grant through the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment in 2017 and 2019 to test all of our drinking water fixtures and bring those within and below our federal standard. We partnered with the City of Loveland Water Department, as well as the Colorado State University Department of Civil and Environmental Engineering, to test all of those fixtures. That was, 2,645 samples were collected during that timeframe. We had some of those fixtures that were elevated, so while that grant did cover the testing piece, we did cover those remediation costs to make sure that our drinking water was safe for our staff, students, and families. And 3.9% of those fixtures did require remediation at that time. Since then, there has been legislation to require schools to test their water in the state of Colorado. So I do want to acknowledge also Jess, this is the Jess Arnold Show, for her efforts, not only in that voluntary sampling and remediation project, but also in the mandatory sampling. So I'm gonna bring her up here to talk a little bit more about the testing that has been completed over the last couple of years. So Jess Arnold is our Environmental Health and Safety Manager for the district.
Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on lead testing and remediation in the Thompson School District. The test and fix, as we are on the right slide, the test and fix program was created to provide clean water in schools and childcare facilities. This program was signed into law by Governor Polis in June of 2022. This made sampling in, this made sampling for lead in drinking water mandatory across Colorado. This law also set a standard of five parts per billion as the acceptable lead, level of lead in drinking water. All sample results are published on the state's test and fix database, so the state launched a platform for all sample information to be accessed, and I'll show that website here in just a little bit. So this is all public information, and it is accessible for anyone to review. I also want to highlight that the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment paid for the lab analysis and also reimbursed for any remediation actions. Next slide, please. So again, the action level for lead in drinking water in Colorado is more stringent than the federal level, which is 15 parts per billion. Sampling for lead in drinking water was conducted in a phased approach, so we started with the elementary schools and then moved to middle schools. All sampling was completed by May of 2024, again, starting with our elementaries working towards the middle schools. So we achieved the, were ahead of the state's deadline of November 2024 to have all sampling completed. All samples were analyzed, as I mentioned earlier, by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment at their water quality lab. And in summary, we tested a total of 642 fixtures, 545 of which fell below the state standard of five parts per billion, and 97 fixtures were above that threshold, which required remediation actions. Next slide. Just to talk through the actions that were taken and what that process looked like, so when we received results, we provided those results with the lead testing levels, basically, where our fixtures stood. We provided all that information to the school, you know, the schools. Fixtures were then taken out of service, or they were signed for handwashing only until we can complete the remediation actions. School administration notified parents and staff of those test results, and then maintenance went to each location to review the fixtures, make a determination of what the best remediation action would be. Some examples of those decisions include installing point-of-use filters, taking the fixture out of use if it was a low-use fixture, or changing out the faucets, supply lines, sodders, those potential sources of lead. Once the remediation actions were complete, confirmation sampling was done to ensure that those fixtures actually were safe for use and met the state standard. To date, all remediation work has been completed at our elementary schools, and we are working through the remediation actions at the middle schools. Our focus right now is on priority of use. Next slide. And then I just wanted to provide a summary of fixtures that required remediation. So these are our 97 fixtures, a breakdown of our 97 fixtures. The fixtures requiring remediation included classroom sinks, drinking fountains, health office sinks, kitchen kettles, kitchen dishwashing sinks, and produce sinks. So it really was quite a bit of, it was robust sampling. About 58% of those fixtures requiring remediation were classroom faucets, and approximately 30% of the fixtures were kitchen faucets that were used for dishwashing, production of food, or washing produce. Next slide. So I mentioned this earlier, this is the test and fix water for kids dashboard that is accessible by just simply Googling test and fix, and you can, from there, you can select by district, or you can, you can select the facility names. So if you had a certain location that you were interested in finding information or sampling data for, this is true for all samples across the state of Colorado, so there's a lot of information here, and you can review the sample details. So in conclusion, I just wanted to provide some acknowledgements of folks that, partners, community partners that we've worked with. Dr. Laura Leonard and the lab, the water control quality team at the lab, the state lab, they were so valuable, such a good partnership there in helping us not only assess the samples, but then also work through the reimbursement process. Also, the facilities department team who performed the physical remediation work, our district plumbers, I cannot say, I cannot show my appreciation for all that they've done in the time that they've spent to make our water supply safer. And then all of our building leadership, who assisted in communication to families and staff with those results. Any questions?
You mentioned elementary and the middle school, were high schools included?
The state has not sent an update requiring high schools. I think that's, it'll be much more, we would anticipate that it's coming, but it's gonna be much more involved, just with the amount of samples. So right now, the focus per the legislation is elementaries and middle schools.
Do we have plans to proactively do the high schools? Do you think?
I could loop back with you on that. We haven't allocated.
I just asked that off the top of my head, so it's for later to think about, for sure.
And I can answer that as well. So we did, did sample them through the voluntary grant program, and we anticipate that the state will be releasing that as well. So yes, that is in the plans to test the rest of our facilities as well.
Did the city of Loveland Water Department also test the water in Berthoud? Because I didn't see any mention in the slides of how the water at the Berthoud schools was tested.
So that would have fallen under the state's sampling as well?
So the state tested the water in Berthoud?
Correct, at our Berthoud locations, at our Berthoud schools. Those samples would have been submitted to the state as well.
All right, and you have reports back from the state about the water testing in Berthoud as well as in Loveland?
Mm-hmm. We did have remediation actions required at Ivy Stockwell and Turner Middle School.
And that leads me to my next question. So the remediated fixtures are throughout the district?
Yes.
Elementaries at this point, and middle schools, or the remediation numbers that you gave were really just for the elementary schools, what do you want to say?
So. So we had samples that the state accepted some of our prior year data, and those samples that were, fell below the federal level, the 15, and didn't meet the state standard, there's a, there was a group of samples that we recollected, and that happened across the district. Every location that didn't meet the state standard was retested. Did I answer that question?
Kind of. In regard to the fixtures themselves, the fixtures were replaced in district elementary schools only at this point?
I'm sorry, yes.
And then they'll be down the road as needed in the middle schools, and then perhaps in the high schools if that's ever.
Yes, we're working through the middle schools right now, the remediation.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
I just wanted to try and add that one as well. So fixtures are turned off. They're, they're not used until that remediation can take place. So in middle school, some have been remediated, and others were waiting on those fixtures to come in. to come in.
Amy, any questions? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you. All right. 7.3 is the summer school update for our summer scholars.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, Melissa Schneider, Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services, I'm still getting used to that title change. With me, I have Tiffany Jones, who is our Director of Curriculum and Learning Design, and Instructional Design, rather. And she has led a great effort this summer on summer school. Wanted to provide you with an update. As you might recall, this summer school was provided to our students free of charge. We made some changes since last year to have a more academically focused summer school, but still have it be fun. And so Tiffany is going to share with us some of the outcomes and some of the pictures that we had, we took as we walked through schools this summer.
Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, Tiffany Jones, Director of Curriculum and Learning Design. So I have an exciting update about our summer scholars program this year that we kicked off. And as you see here, these are our connections to Strive 2025. And this, of course, is our guiding question. So how did we create a free-of-charge summer option that was structured academically and enriching for our students here in Thompson? So this is just a reminder of what was summer scholars. We wanted to make sure that our focus was using our school district-provided curriculum. We used our new Envision intervention kits. And then we wanted to make sure that students also had that traditional summer experience through enrichment opportunities to really stretch their thinking and still enjoy school in the summer. So we have for you some photos from our kindergarten through fifth program here. Especially wanted to give a positive shout-out to our fire department, our police department, our K-9 unit, our EMS. And then our Loveland poet laureate also came and presented to all of our K-5 students. And then we also had our caring K-9s. So just a few photos for you. And a brief reminder of our schedule, we did have a four-hour program, but a good balance of academics and enrichment, so just to refresh your memory. And then I wanted to highlight our structure. So we actually had about 600 K-5 students this summer. We had five locations. Transportation definitely came through and supported our program. And then we did a three-week session that was hosted for four days a week. Here are the dates. And then we wanted to make sure we told everybody that we did provide breakfast and lunch, and that it was free to our families. So when we think about our staffing, I just want to make sure that we highlight, as we consider making sure all of our students are at grade level at the end of third grade, hiring our site coordinators early enough on to provide our coordinators the data to ensure that we were inviting families during that conference time, those spring conferences, we were able to target and identify students that we really wanted to strongly encourage that they attended while they were at their conferences. So where parents were well-informed about what summer scholars was going to be. So it was very, very helpful to have those coordinators hired. We also staffed about six to 12 licensed teachers at each of our site. And then we had that lead coordinator that really handled the logistics, the parent communication, all of the training, registration, and then, of course, our school health office aide. And then we also provided paras to support those other duties that a para would need to support. So when we closed out our summer scholars program, many of you joined for our presentations of learning. These are just a few pictures to capture what students learned. It was different at every site, how they chose to present their learning, but it was really exciting to hear what students were learning over those three weeks. So as always, we wanted to ask our students for feedback, and they were able to write their feedback to us, because of course, we wanted to take student feedback for next year, which will now be this year, and hear what did they appreciate, but also what would they do differently in the upcoming years. And so we have a few pieces of feedback from our students here. Some of them loved that it was fun, which is always a positive, but they also loved their enrichment activities. And then on the next slide, you will see exactly a few quotes that they really appreciated learning together, which is a huge success for me. And I appreciated the student gave it a four out of five, but also had evidence there provided of why they thought it was a four out of five. So great success hearing from our students. Here we've got our middle school programs, sixth through eighth, a few pictures capturing what our middle schoolers did. Similar to Refresh Your Memory, here's our schedule. And then our structure is, we hosted this year at all of our middle school sites. We had about 70 students, and so again, similar to elementary, we transported our students, breakfast and lunch was provided. And of course, this one, just like elementary, was free of cost as well. So staffing, again, was similar, but different in the sense that we had three licensed teachers. The structure looked different, but we also wanted to make sure that we provided the enrichment opportunities. We had a lead coordinator that handled that logistics and trainings, communication with parents, and then, of course, a ShoA, and then one paraprofessional at all of our middle school sites. So this captures some of our presentations of learning for our middle schoolers. And then we had students write their feedback as well for middle school. So you will see in their feedback, they appreciated learning more about summaries and language arts. The students appreciated the math, because it goes hand-in-hand with what they're learning throughout the year. And we even used Zello, which is our program, and they were learning personality words so they could start digging in some job opportunities. So things that went really well, we started marketing through Mike Hausmann's team really early on. We also were able to have parents register through Infinite Campus. And I want to point out, the beauty of that was that we are now able to track a student's data because they're rostered in Infinite Campus, that now I can compare their end-of-year I-Ready score from last year to their beginning-of-I-Ready score this year. And so now we have a cohort, about 700 students, that now we're able to really progress monitor and see what was that return on that investment, which I know is huge. So we also were able to do attendance, we were able to make those calls. And then really, our teachers all did progress monitoring from the beginning of our three-week program to the end of our three-week program. So not only did we ask feedback from our students, we asked from our families. We had really positive feedback from our families. They appreciated that it was a good balance between academic and enrichment. They appreciated that we offered something for them, for their students over the summer. And it was really great that we were able to review some of that content, so the students didn't forget over the summer. We also asked our staff for feedback, because we wanted to hear from them as well. So here are just a few quotes about our, or feedback from our staff. And as we consider what really needs to stay the same, or what we would suggest staying the same, we want to make sure that all of these items, that we continue to be successful, and it's again, using that TSD-provided curriculum. We ran summer scholars just like school. We did emergency drills, we did a fire drill, we did a presentation of learning, we did communication to our families to make sure they knew each week what our theme was and what was going on in the classroom. Of course, we wanted to gather that data. And then, of course, we wanted to make sure that we have that budget for staffing, so we can keep our staff retained for the summer scholars program. So what we learned is my way of also including our feedback, but making sure that we had some opportunities for growth this year. And so when we think about, how are we going to provide a day-to-day lesson for our program? We hired some staff that either went from middle school or high school down to elementary school. Our staff isn't all trained in science of reading, and so our own teachers gave us really good feedback on, can you provide the lesson plans? And that way, it is really tight across all of our programs, and then they get to put their teacher finesse on top of our lesson plans. And that came directly from them. The other piece is, they wanted consistent themes and enrichment opportunities that we scheduled on our team to ensure that everybody had the same opportunities to see the K-9s, to see the ambulance, the fire department, but that we would schedule that, so it's not a barrier of plain phone tag. And that our students in elementary school, not everybody took home a device, and so we need to make sure we're providing them with that workbook opportunity as well. And so we've got a great balance there. We really want to partner with ITS Transportation and ESS earlier, because of course, a lot of this communication is happening in May, and we all know what May brings. It's that kind of end-of-the-year busy time. And so we want to part with, partner with them earlier on, starting in about February, so we can get this rolling. And then that way, everything is handled, and then we can start closing out the school year. We also want to make sure that we do something different with middle school. I'm not sure what that is yet, but we want to, want to take some time to really meet with our kids and hear what would entice them to come to summer scholars, or give us feedback on why you're not coming. And so the other piece that we had here that we learned is that having a floating counselor at any given moment was really a great success for us. So as we think about how we're preparing for next year, I am scheduled to go and do middle school listening sessions with, with each of our middle schools and our K-8s to start picking our kids' brain on, what happened, why aren't you coming? Again, how can we get you there, and what can we provide? We're going to start working with operations early on, so we can review our sites for next year, so we can identify those sites in order to start getting that planning started. We already have a meeting set up with Boys and Girls Club and YMCA, because we really try to make a partnership of, we're at the same sites they are, so the families can have a student at summer scholars, and then they go right into the afternoon program with either Boys and Girls and YMCA. We'd really like to hire our leads, and so that way, we are also hiring somebody to, to get ahead of the lesson plans. And then we want to make sure that we are developing a tight marketing timeline to get parents' information. Parents gave us some feedback that they really do want to know by February what our summer scholars plan would be, because they're already scheduling their summer programs by February. And then, of course, we want to make sure that we listen to the teachers. We actually sent out a personal survey to every teacher who has a summer scholar student in their class right now, to see if they notice a difference of those students in their classroom when compared to somebody who didn't attend summer scholars. And so we're going to go through, those surveys went out, and so as soon as we get them back, we want to go through and see what feedback they give us. What questions do you have?
Any questions? No, thank you. Okay. Denise?
I'd just like to see that data when it becomes available. It'll be very interesting.
Yeah.
I'm the same as Denise, I actually wrote it down. It'd be really interesting to see the end-of-year I-Ready, and then the new fall I-Ready. That'll be good.
Just a couple of things, Tiffany. I'm very impressed with the advanced thinking that you're doing for next year, preparing for what summer scholars will look like next year. Thank you for answering some of the questions that I submitted. One question I submitted, and perhaps the answer to the question is embedded in two or three of the slides, but the comments that I read from student and family were all positive. One staff member was not necessarily negative, but was perhaps a concern. I'm curious, did you receive any comments that were concerning from either students or family, or other comments from staff? And if so, what did you do about them? In other words, are they embedded in some of the slides in terms of what you talked about? And if not, how did you handle people of whatever age who are not completely pleased with some aspects of the program? Does that make sense?
It does. So we actually only had one survey that had a concern, it was around the meals. And so our Berthitt school, because our sites are different based on free and reduced, that's how our summer programs receive the free meals. Our Berthitt Elementary is not qualified for free and reduced meals, however, the families still had breakfast and lunch. But the only comment we had was, how do we make it the same meal that the other sites had? Because of course, families were chatting. And we've already been working with Lisa Kendall on what that might look like if we continue to have a site that does not qualify for free and reduced. And so we've got a pretty good pulse on how we can still offer then the same meals at all sites.
And then just one other comment about kids. Did you have any concerning comments from kids?
No. No.
This is such an important program. This takes summer school in a very different direction than it has gone before. So kudos and hats off to you and your team for what appears to be a really successful venture.
Thank you.
Courtney, did you have a comment? It's about the free and reduced center.
You read my mind. Thank you, Madam President. To just piggyback on what Tiffany replied regarding the meals, just to be clear, the summer program is the summer food program. It's not the free and reduced meal, or the HSMA Healthy School Meals for All program. So there's different requirements, and Berthitt, the Berthitt area did not qualify for that program, so it was arranged and taken care of a different way. So I just wanted to make sure there was that clarification, that Berthitt is certainly included in the HSMA Healthy School Meals for All program. Summer food is a different program.
Didn't qualify because of the socioeconomic factors.
That's correct. They, they consolidate schools, or look, can look at geographic areas. And in Loveland, we were able to group our schools accordingly, so they did qualify. Loveland did not, so that's why there were different meals that were served there. Thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'll just say that I visited the, what did you call it? The presentation.
Presentation on the P.O.S.
Yes. And I could only get to the one at Lincoln, but it was fun and so engaging and see how motivated. And I was amazed at how many parents were able to be there as well for that. So it's pretty cool.
Yeah, I'll chime in on that. I went to the one at Turner, and it was excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. All right, 7.3, I think we have. I'm back again against the summer field. Finally. Property update.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, Board Education, Dr. Schaefer. Yes, this is a good news update. And really, when we go, when we look at Strike 2025 and the alignment and audit of assets, this allowed us to reinvest into Conball. And we've all seen what impact that's had there, but yeah, this 4.2 really takes into account how this work really impacted a lot of students. But yes, to fast forward, this is a good news story. This has been a project almost three years to the date to work through. I will not go into details of how and what took place over the three years, but nonetheless, last Monday, we did close on the land, transferred ownership to the developer, and they're working now with the city to finalize their process to ultimately develop homes there. So the plan for the development is, between our parcel and the parcel to the south, is about 1,100 homes that will be developed there on that piece of property. So we were very excited between myself and Mr. Jones here to see those funds go in the bank, and then, yeah, the expenditures coming have already been accounted for out of that. So just want to provide an update to the board and community that that project has been complete, and we're wrapped up, and it's sealed. It was, yes.
Any questions?
And I recall, the proceeds from this, that was used, that went towards the peak view?
It is. So we, yeah, we put that towards the peak view budget, yes.
Did Amy have anything?
Amy, do you?
I don't want to forget her.
No, thank you.
Okay. Are you part of this next one? No? Okay. 7.5 is the career technical education update. I just think of you as when I see TCE in the building. All right. Melissa?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer. Tonight, we have, our last presentation of the night is an update on our career and technical education programming, which is very exciting. We have Andy Stevens here with us, our Director of CTE. He's going to share with you some work of the Vision and Mission Committee, as well as some future thoughts for CTE.
Madam President, Dr. Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, member of the board. Good evening. It is my pleasure this evening to be here with you to share an update about all of our C T E programming that is that is currently happening as well as what we're excited for in the future to come. As we think about C T E in Thompson School District, we make a connection with Strive Twenty Twenty Five and focus area number one, Student Achievement, where we recognize that career and technical education is committed to student achievement by helping students prepare for both career and college readiness and life beyond the walls of the schoolhouse via innovative pathways and academic choice. Dr. Schneider mentioned that I formed a task force, which I'll share a little bit more about with you in a minute. But the main role of that task force was to create a new C T E mission and vision for our district. And after meetings and and great work, our new C T E mission is that Thompson School District will empower students with dynamic, evolving skills that link both education and opportunity. And our mission is that Thompson School District's C T E will create accessible pathways through experiential learning, collaboration, and equipping students with the skills necessary, again, for both career and college readiness. When we talk about career and technical education in Thompson School District, it really is a three-legged approach. So we focus on C T E curriculum and programming. We look at the concurrent enrollment opportunities that we offer to all of our students and then also those work-based learning experiences that are provided K twelve to all of our students in the system. So if we zoom out to thirty thousand feet and look at the programming that we're currently offering, we have over forty credentialed C T E teachers in the district and those are both in middle and high school. We have eight different career and student technical organizations, which are organizations like DECA, F B L A, F C C L A, Skills USA, with twenty-one total chapters in the district. And I'm excited to announce this year, we'll be adding a new, so we'll have nine after this year, as we look at H O S A, which is for health science students. Some, some current projects we're working on in C T E programming, the E M T pathway, which I'll provide more details about in a few minutes. We have twenty-one students currently enrolled in the Future Educator Pathway, which is a district pathway at Loveland High. High School of Business is underway also at Loveland High for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And then we continue to grow our post-secondary partnerships. So for many years, Ames and Front Range were our primary post-secondary partners, but we're looking to expand those opportunities for our students with concurrent enrollment beyond two-year partners to now also investigate four-year opportunities as well. When we think about who's taking our programming, who are the students that are enrolling in all of these different opportunities that we offer? You can see the total enrollment numbers in this table. The one thing that I that I do want to point out as a stated goal for me and my team this year is addressing the disparities we see in what we consider non-traditional gender enrollment. So if you look at construction trades, of the two hundred and ninety-two students enrolled, only sixty-one identify as a female. How are we tackling that disparity to get our female students more involved in skilled trades? How are we getting more female students engaged in advanced manufacturing? Because we know those types of jobs are driving our local economy. So that is a stated goal for me and my team this year to really tackle that that enrollment disparity. In addition to the overall enrollment in our C T E programs, we also have, Laura Lee, if you'll go to the next one for me, thank you. We also have what are called C D I P. And C D I P is a program at the state level where students earn industry certifications as well as advanced work-based learning opportunities that are classified as pre-apprenticeship or apprenticeship level work-based learning. And so this table here just provides a quick overview of the number of students at each of our high schools that participated in those tier one C D I P opportunities. So again, either in industry certification or in a pre-apprenticeship or an apprenticeship. Another stated goal of my team, in addition to the enrollment disparity, is to create opportunities at the end of every program in our district where students have the opportunity to earn either an industry certification or complete in a tier one work-based learning opportunity so that these numbers can double and triple in size. Speaking of work-based learning, some of the highlights from our work-based learning experiences this past year for our middle school learners, we do what's called Get Into The Guts of Healthcare and that's in partnership with our U C Health and Banner Health Partners, where students go to Front Range Community College and they get to tour the Health Sciences Building at Front Range, which if you've never been is a beautiful facility. And then they also get to do basically a like a career tour of different medical careers in the region. And then we also every year host every eighth grader in the district at T C C. Prior, we're moving it this year to October to capture those students before high school registration. But it's really a great opportunity for our eighth graders to learn, okay, I've dabbled in C T E in middle school. Now what do I get to do when I go to high school? And so that event has been very successful. At the high school level, when we think about work-based learning, I mentioned our paid opportunities in internships and apprenticeships. I've had the opportunity to present to you before about our I T apprentices and the awesome program that that is. That continues to grow as well. And then we also have opportunities where students are able to go to events like Construction Con, which is out at the ranch. And it's a regional event where, you know, eighty to a hundred skilled trades employers are all in the big four H hall and students are able to interact with those skilled trades employers. They get to drive a backhoe and they get to practice welding and they get to do all these really cool hands-on experiences in this kind of one-day field trip. We also every year host a work-based learning fair where students get to come and Larimer County comes and puts on resume workshops. They help students get their resume ready and then they can turn right around and walk out to the fair because we have employers there that are hiring for summer work. Lifeguarding is always very popular. And so that's another great opportunity for our students. When we think about concurrent enrollment, again, concurrent enrollment is the opportunity for high school students to earn college credit while currently enrolled in high school. And I always love to, you know, shout this from the rooftop, the credit is free. It does not cost the students a single penny. And so what I wanted to present tonight to the board was the trend in how much our students are accessing these opportunities. You can see ascent numbers in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had sixteen students. And you'll remember that ascent is that fifth year program where students delay graduation a year and they essentially get a free year of college at a post-secondary institution. This year, well, last year, I'm sorry, we had sixty-five. And for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, that number is closer to eighty. So another year of substantial growth. When we think about number of total credits earned, you can see that that number is almost doubling year over year, which again is a fantastic thing because ultimately we're, we're providing advanced learning opportunities and saving our families money, which is, which is great. So I mentioned my task force that I formed in the spring and the work that we did was to create that vision, mission, and guiding principles for career and technical education in Thompson School District. I'm excited to share that that task force is going to continue to help us continue to craft and mold what C T E in Thompson School District is going to look like. The task force is made up of internal and external stakeholders, staff, building administrators, obviously our industry partners, and most importantly, students will be added this year so that their voice is heard and recognized. Our big project right now is our E M T pathway. You may recall that Thompson School District was awarded $2 million from Larimer County and from our partners at Bohemian. And that $2 million was part of a larger $4 million grant and donation. And so we are using our $2 million to expand the physical infrastructure at T C C to launch an E M T pathway. And I'm not sure, Laura Lee, if you can click on that link that's in there. I was just going to show the designs very quickly. Okay, no problem. If you can picture the T C C, we're going to add the twenty-one hundred square feet directly to the north of the existing building. So it's basically going to be flush with the Health Sciences room and it'll just be a nice square twenty-one hundred square feet. The, the room will be designed for flexible instruction, so it will have space for demonstrations. It will have a large kind of learning platform so we can do demonstrations. Students can interact if we need to have them practicing loading a gurney or, you know, draw blood pressures on a dummy. We'll have plenty of of space to do that. But I'm also excited because it's going to have a riser effect. And so it will be kind of that stadium seating so that it'll have that kind of college lecture hall feel, which I just think kind of gives credence to the program. Oh, here it is. So you can see this is kind of the bird's eye view from above. Looking east is kind of the top of the, of the monitor there. So you can see the, we'll have four rows of ten seats. Those will be fixed to the risers. And then this last row of eight will be flexible seating. So if we don't need the forty-eight seats, we can move those eight to give us a bigger learning space. But if we need the eight, then we still have about a thousand square feet for lecture there. You can see we have storage and then we're also excited because we'll be working on putting an actual ambulance simulator in the room for students to be able to actually practice. So this is obviously very exciting. Hopefully breaking ground in December is, is the plan at this point. Yes. Yes. Absolutely. So this program will be designed for juniors and seniors. We will utilize our partnership with Ames Community College. They have a public safety institute. And so we, they will be receiving concurrent enrollment credit through Ames. And we will also be leveraging our partnership with Big Thompson E M S. And they will be providing, at the end of the two-year pathway, the state of Colorado requires students do a clinical experience. So they have to actually get out on a bus, go on rides, help the current E M Ts. And so we'll be leveraging that partnership with Big Thompson E M S to do that for them. Like all of our other district pathways, students will also earn core credit. They will earn those C D I P certifications I spoke of earlier at the end of each year. So multiple certifications earned. And then most of all, and equally important, part of the, the money, part of the hope when the money was given to us was that we would create opportunities to promote regional collaboration. And so we'll be working in partnership with Pooter School District and Estes Park School District to provide these opportunities to their students as well. And in exchange, Pooter School District is opening spots in their behavioral health pathway for our students to go and access that. So, yeah, so those, that partnership has really grown as we've worked through this project together. Questions?
I'm going to start off by saying thank you. Just what we needed to hear, where we're going with all of that. So it's very exciting. Dawn, you want to start? I can tell you're just bursting.
I am, I'm very excited about the behavioral health. I hope we do it ourselves sometime soon. And also really excited about looking at the disparity. My daughter is the only female in like forty kids in transportation right now. Although I will say, I forget my language, but it's after nine o'clock. She feels like a badass because she's the only girl in there. So you should tell people that, that should be on the poster. I am really excited about all of this. It's just so fun that every time we look at this, it's exciting all over again. My favorite part is the way that the numbers are going. And what was also ringing my head is something that Debbie said hours ago now about what, what we wish we knew as freshman parents compared to senior parents. And I think C T E is probably one of the biggest places where that's true. And so I'm excited that you're moving some things up, the stuff for middle school, the stuff for high school. I think, you know, every chance we get to be talking about this more is a way that we get people involved earlier and excited about it. I also think that there's something great success stories from students that we can share. I know that, you know, many students have shared how they're doing C T E now because they know that that's something that they're maybe passionate about, even though they're not going to do that for a career or vice versa. And so I think talking about some of those success stories is going to be one of the ways that we really get people to pay attention to this who haven't yet. So very excited, very glad for all of this. It's just so much fun. Thank you.
Yeah, Dawn covered two or three of the things that I was going to, to comment on as well. So I won't repeat what she said. Laura Lee, could you put the slide back up? Who is taking C T E programming? Can we look at that again? I have a question about that, Amy. So the numbers in the far right column are the total number, not the total number of students, but the total number of classes, courses that students at the various high schools are taking that into that particular category. Is that correct?
No, so that's a good point. So the, the programs are the state-approved programming. So for example, I'll, I'll use Business Management and Marketing there, that third, that third row. So within Business Management and Marketing, there are over fifteen classes that are state-approved that we offer as a district. So what this data tells us is that in those fifteen classes in Business and Marketing, we had eleven hundred and forty-eight total students enrolled district-wide in those fifteen classes. Of those eleven forty-eight, four hundred and seventy-nine were female, six hundred and sixty-nine were male. Sure.
Drop down a couple of rows. Interested in education, not so much the numbers, but what courses, what classes do kids take that would qualify as preparing them for a career in education, the C T E emphasis in education?
Yeah, great question. So some of the coursework early on is all about like, they call it teen choices. So it's understanding kind of the, the psychology of students working with adolescents. Then they move into some early childhood education study. And then ultimately, if they choose to enroll in our new Future Educator Pathway, they participate in a program called Teacher Cadet. And Teacher Cadet is a year-long, double-blocked district pathway where the first semester is instructional, learning methods, learning pedagogy, learning what it is to be a teacher. And then the second semester is a field experience that is supervised by our teacher at Loveland High. And that's really what would then move them into higher-level work-based learning opportunities, being potentially an apprentice or a classroom aide or really starting to work in the field of education. And then hopefully, fingers crossed, they would take advantage of the TREP program, which is very similar to ascent where you can delay graduation for up to two years and pursue your first two years of education towards an education degree and that is paid for by the district.
That's that you mentioned are housed in Consumer and Family Studies.
Exactly, right.
And then they translate into other uses as, as the kids go through. Can you tell me just a couple more things about this Teacher Cadet program? I'm interested in that, just.
Yeah, so it's a district, yeah, so it's a district-wide program housed at Loveland High because that's where our teacher was located who had the correct credentials. And so it's open to any student in the district. So we have twenty-one students just launched this fall. So we're on day four.
I can actually provide testimonials. As I remember in the Schaefer household, it's one of those twenty-one students. It's not Dr. Schaefer. My daughter, who aspires to be a future educator, she is in this class, double-blocked. And she's loving it. It's a rigorous class. It's an honors class and she's eligible to earn college credit. And she's eligible to earn college credit, but more importantly, it's very practical. So she is, the teacher's very inspiring, very talented Loveland High teacher. My daughter doesn't attend Loveland High, is able, is eligible to take it, so she drives there. And again, she's just a week into the class. My daughter is very selective in, in what courses she works on with homework, but she's always doing it in that class, so I can tell that she's highly engaged. We're a weekend, and she's enjoying it.
So just one last comment from me, Andy. Congratulations on expanding a concept, at least for this guy, in terms of what CTE is. Because I tend to think of CTE as preparing kids in realms and for careers in something other than education. And I think that's terrific. And as a school district, should we be preparing future teachers? Absolutely, we should. And that we're doing it is exciting, so kudos for that.
Thank you.
You know, I, I love the CTE program. I think it's a good way to show kids that they can have other pathways. They may not always involve college, but they can certainly make a good living out. I will be honest, I was a little struck by your comment when you started talking about the disparities, disparities with, with female and male. You know, because when I, I look through that, it's like, well, you kind of have the same thing with hospitality, with education, fashion. And so for me, it's like, I just think the focus should be like, if that's what the kids are drawn to, then we make sure that they can be successful versus trying to call it disparity. I mean, not everyone's drawn to something. I think it's still great that there's guys that are drawn to fashion design. So, but the program is, I especially like the EMT stuff that's going to be starting.
So with our existing programs and the new ones rolling out, can we meet the demand for students that are interested? Or are we still cutting and just taking the, the top applicants?
That is, that is a challenge. Hiring staff is very hard. And if I don't have enough teachers, I don't have enough sections in a master schedule to meet the demand. So yes, we, we are having to make some hard decisions around access to, until I, you know, I would love to have ten auto teachers at Thompson Valley and get every kid in there that I can. But the reality is, that's just not where we are. So, yeah.
So just to extend on that, I, I think positive news is, obviously, we have, there's a lot of interest. There's a lot of student interest. Downside is, as Andy said, is that we have more interest than we have ability to, to meet those needs. We have very talented teachers that are currently working for us at the TCC as well as in our CTE programs. The challenge is that they not only have to be certified to teach in our high schools, they also have to be credentialed to be able to award a college credit, be dual-enrollment, as well as credential to maybe, to give industry certificates, et cetera. We are continuing to explore compensation models to better attract and recruit individuals, you know, recognizing that these are highly skilled individuals, so we're, we're, we're exploring. We're also exploring, and I've charged the team with maybe looking at evening pathways as well as opening up maybe pathways for our communities, so not just relegating it to our students, but maybe there might be adult education opportunities as well. We have a beautiful facility and I want it used all the time, not just during the day. So part of the challenge again is just instructors, right? So when we build it, people have come, we want to make sure that we have people that are, should be qualified to teach. But I will tell you that Andy and his team are, are doing extraordinary things. I couldn't be more proud. This is an absolute point of pride of our school district. Again, also just recognizing that the pathways can begin in middle school. And quite honestly, we're exploring at the elementary levels, what we want to illuminate for students, opportunities. And, you know, again, it's our focus on college and career and community readiness. These, a lot of students, when they matriculate and graduate from our programs, are immediately employable at fairly high pageant.
Amy, do you have any questions?
I know Denise actually asked my, my question about the, I didn't land. But, you know, thank you, Amy. This is really great news to hear. I love, love, love that we are reaching out to middle school students. I just think that that's, you know, if that's a way to keep students engaged. And, yeah, so I just, I love that. And I love everything CTE. That, again, I really think that it's important, you know, that, that we sort of do shift that narrative about, you know, it's for folks not pursuing college, that, you know, it's part of, it, it's available for every student. So, um, thank you, and Denise, thanks for asking my question.
All right, thank you, Amy.
Yes, thank you, Ms.
Thanks to you. Okay, um, I have eight group reports, and there is one, it's the Early Childhood August 2024 meeting, which I attended for Amy. And then nine is request for information. Any requests? All right, meeting is adjourned.